12:00 PM, Tuesday, November 30, 2021, in Room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all our RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota People, and we honor the Dakota Nations and the sacred land of all Indigenous people. Present at this meeting are School Board members, Superintendent Kent Pecel, a non-voting ex officio member, and Assistant Board Clerk Ms. Michelle Severson. Ms. Severson, will you please call the roll again?
Thank you. Clerk Amundson.
Chair.
Director Barlow.
Here.
Director Garcia.
Here.
Director McLaughlin.
Here.
Chair Marvin.
Here.
Vice Chair Nathan.
Here.
And Treasurer Workman.
Here.
Thank you.
At this time, we provide an opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We welcome all of you to this meeting, whether you're here in person or virtually, and we welcome you to join with our school district in supporting our students and our children. I've been in the district for a long time, and I believe that just about everyone wants all children to be provided with the experiences and opportunities that will allow them to become positive, ethical, responsible, productive adults. I hope that all of us will keep that in mind and that during these meetings, during these experiences, children are paying attention. They are listening, and they are watching, and they are learning from all of us how adults act and interact with others. As a reminder, school district requires effective masks to be worn by everyone two years old and older in all RPS buildings. We are committed to slowing the spread of COVID so that we can keep our schools open and our students in their classrooms. Edison Building is an RPS facility, so if you choose to attend a meeting here rather than view this live stream at home or elsewhere, you need to wear an effective mask. Policies and consequences are posted. 2.0, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
It's been moved and seconded.
All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Agenda is approved. 3.0, comments to the Board. Board members welcome correspondence from the public and the opportunity to have conversations with you. Comments to the Board is not a time designed for conversation, so we generally won't respond, although we're happy to talk with you later. Those who have signed up to speak and have been provided with the guidelines for this part of the meeting know that personal attacks and speeches directed to the audience are neither appropriate nor productive. Each speaker will have three minutes, and we ask you to respect this limit so others may have their opportunity to speak. When your name is called, please have a seat in front of the microphone at this table. State your name and whether you are a resident of the school district. As we have explained before, those who are presenting to and facing the school board and who are able to maintain a physical distance have the option of removing their masks while they're speaking. Our first speaker is Nancy Bentley. Yes, you can. Thank you. Good evening. 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 Thank you. Good evening.[759.66]
Understand in four languages and then they got refined. So these are some of the examples of the cars and the reason why you don't have them in your hands yet is because they are the printer right now and we should have them ready next week. So again, in order to make them more accessible, we heard from parents and they wanted to have not too many words. So we came up with some symbols and put in the front of the cars the explanation for each symbol. These were run by parents, approved by parents and changed and tweaked again and again over a whole, almost year and a half process long. And then we got this. So we have our cards translated into four different languages. How do we choose the languages? These are the four top languages spoken by the families in the organizations which we work. So they gave us the feedback and these are the languages that we were able to find translators locally. And here they are. They are, they're not only aimed to support specific areas of growth or domains, but they reinforce the bond between parent or caregiver and child. So all of the activities, even if they're physical and motor activity, they're aimed at assisting the parent in understanding the relationship with their child, teaching them when to stop, when to continue, how to look for cues in their child to reinforce the social emotional learning across the board. So we are hoping to instill not only that, that bond between parent and make it stronger, but we're hoping to instill a long life love for learning and curiosity. So, and then, so the ready cards, how do they align with RPS? So we know that we're, we're measuring when these cards on their gold, RPS is not using those tools. However, we have cross-referenced some of the cards and the activities of that RPS is using to measure readiness in kindergarten. For example, in early math, you guys are using Fastbridge. One of the measures is called numeral identification and we have the card crafting numbers in, that works exactly on that, helping a parent craft with the kid, the number to help him or her identify the numbers and shape them and talk to the child. If you are able to read through the text, it's a little bit small, I realize, but the parent is constantly interacting with the child. So while they're working on numeral identification, they're also working on that bond and that personal relationship, that warmth that we aim to foster in our kids. Same thing with counting objects. It's like even the name of the activity is called counting objects, right? Based on the previous activity, the parent interacts with the kid and they work on sequential counting of numbers to reinforce this concept. When we moved on to literacy, one of the measurements that you are looking for in our kids at the early entrance of kindergarten is concepts of print. Our book activity, even though it doesn't have the kid printing himself, sometimes we think of reinforcing or talking about print, the kid writing himself and literacy about reading and writing, but part of the literacy at that early age comes from even knowing how to hold a book and encourage the kid to flip pages one by one. So our cars encourage that, learning about print in a meaningful way. But again, in fostering and strengthening that relationship while the parent is writing a book about the parent and caregiver and the child is something meaningful for both of them. And then listening and looking at cues on when to continue and when to go ahead, how far to go with the kid based on their own emotional status and tiredness, you know, how we learn to listen to our own kids. So that's it. And then what is next for us? So this is our first strategy, first two strategies that came together. First define what kindergarten readiness means for the network and how we can bring that definition out to the community and then putting hands, resources in the hands of parents and caregivers. At that time, we did not have any local data. Right now we do. So we have pulled together data from about 400 four-year-olds in Rochester about a year ago. And then to look at progress, we looked at the same data, the same set of kids in the spring. And so with that information, the network went back together and did the analysis of how are we doing and what would happen if we don't change anything? And what we find out is that there are several areas where kids are not meeting expectations. But one of the foundational parts is to focus right now on social emotional learning. The experts on the network from kindergarten, from early childhood peer professionals to the library and reading professionals are in agreement that if we don't take care of the social emotional learning in our kids right now, given what we have been through the pandemic and what they have been through the pandemic, we're not going to be able to work on other areas. So how are we going to do that? We're meeting next week to come up with like this strategy and the action steps that will guide for a whole year probably. But everything seems to indicate to, we're going to go again to putting resources in the hands of parents or caregivers. We want to be able to support parents so they in turn can support their children in this educational process by making them stronger little kids and more resilient and teaching about that social emotional learning skills that are needed as a foundation for everything else. That's where we're going.
Thank you so much, Ms. Tomenia. And if you don't mind, could you, when you talk about social emotional learning in cradle to career, can you just give a really quick definition about what that means?
It means several things. There are several areas of, it's a whole domain. And it means from learning how to share and regulating their emotions and being able to sit still and be in a classroom, all those things. So we have, and I don't have it in front of me and I'm, we're not ready to share that data yet because it's still network data, but we have which of these areas on that social emotional domain are lower across the board and those are the ones that we are going to be reinforcing. One of the very interesting things that we find is, for example, that even though there's a certain decline where we think through in the social emotional learning, when we disagree by race, we notice that the Hispanic community has kept the trend up. So we're going to go back to the community and look what happened, what did they do correctly, what's going on? And we have our theories, right? But we're going to look at them, what is their structure, what is their model, what are they doing correctly so we can bring that across other, across the board? So we're trying to learn from the bright spots to be able to incorporate those across the community.
Thank you so much for explaining that. I know that we, we've seen this in our schools and with our children, that when they're helped to understand ways that they can deal with their anger or if they're afraid or if they're lonely or if they feel frustrated, how, how they can help to understand these are normal feelings, but they're not going to give up. If they can't do something at first, they're going to keep trying. And all of those skills about being a more successful person, being a more independent person, I think are really important. And I'm, I'm so glad that that's one of the focuses that you have.
Yes, even in this set of cars, there's a whole set of social emotional learning and one of them is that is using your words. That's what it's called, use your words. And it walks a parent through how to de-escalate a behavior that they're seeing in their child that will not, we, we can see it. We can all, if we're parents, we can see it in our heads, our little kids starting to get tired and losing their composure. And so it walks through the parent of how to help that kid put in words what they're feeling so they can manage that and control their behaviors and better adjust it.
Thank you. Now, other questions from board? Thank you so much.
Do you want one quick one?
Yes.
You, you've established a really amazing group of organizations with cradle to career. Is there any sector that you don't think is there yet that you'd like to think about adding? Any, any part of the community that hasn't, hasn't been? I'm always interested in like, how can we continue to do better?
Yes.
What would you add?
And it's in the, it's in the process of the, what we're following with the network right now. One of our, the way we work this process on how to get to a strategy is we look at where we're going. It's results-based accountability. We look at where we are, we look at where we would be going if we don't do anything. And then we look at the story behind that curve. And to get the story behind the curve, we go to the community and we look at data. And then we look at who could help and that's where we are. And then what could be done? And once we identify what could be done, we go back and look at the, who can help. So we do have a list of partners that we want to be included, but we can't disclose yet because it's not a final strategy. But yes, we have a list of extra people and opportunities that we need. I mean, given a broad range, it would be pediatrician's offices, for example, early childhood specialists that are not already in the network, home takeers. So without giving specifics, that would be the list.
That's great. Those are great sectors. Thank you for your work.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate your work and your presentation.
Thank you.
We'll move on to 4.02 referendum projects update. This is an information item. Dr. Pecal.
Dr. Marvin and board members, I am excited to introduce Scott Sheridan, who's our executive director of operations, to give the board an update on the status of our referendum projects. And if Scott has been called to step out, we may need to call an audible and shift the agenda item, but hopefully he is around.
And we can come back to him.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we'll move on to 4.03 school openings and closing update. Dr. Pecal.
And again, Dr. Marvin, the board members, we know that in Rochester, we have a really exciting opportunity that many, many, many school districts in Minnesota envy a lot, which is that we are opening schools and also transitioning from one school. And this is a complex process that has many moving parts. It will be a subject of multiple updates for the board. And so I've asked Carl Bakken, who is our executive director of human resources and is leading that effort here centrally, to just give the board and the community a very brief glimpse, because to do a detailed dive would take us all night of the processes that we're going through as we look toward these really exciting changes next fall. We hope this is a down payment on a continuing conversation. And so thank you, Carl.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. Again, as Dr. Pecal referenced, I want to give you a high level overview as we plan for moving into Dakota Middle School, Wright Fit and Rail, moving into the Fridell Building, the opening of Overland, the opening of our expanded Bishop and Longfellow Schools, and then as well as our online school. So again, the purpose is to provide an update on our district team and our efforts to plan for opening and closing these buildings in the summer of 2022. So we have a group. We haven't thought of a real clever name yet besides the opening and school closing, so we probably need to work on that. The group consists of REA principals, special ed administration, student construction, CNI, human resources, cabinet members, and we are only a few meetings in. We may need to add additional members as we go. We had two meetings thus far. We've been meeting every other week. There's a lot of logistical pieces. It's been a lot of intertwined issues. So during our first meeting, we spent a lot of time identifying what the issues are and asking, did we hit them all? Do we need to identify more? And then we've also started to develop a timeline so we can make sure that things stay, identifying things and getting things done as they need to be done in a, in a timely manner. So some of the tasks that we have identified, and this is a non-exhaustive list, hiring and building administration, the number of student seats at each site, and then the subsequent staffing that will go with that resulting from the boundary change. And this includes not just administrators, teachers, but also peer professionals, clerical maintenance, anybody you'd need in a building. Budgets and what title and comp will look like for the, for the new buildings. Are we going to have any specialized programming, special ed programs in the buildings? When are the buildings going to be open and ready to be moved into? And then the educational materials in moving, which has been a spirited discussion and talking about how many teachers average a full pallet of materials when they're moving and how that will impact our trucking and our moving companies that we hire. Additional days for PD, for staff that are going to be in new buildings, how we're going to communicate this with effectively and in a timely manner with parents and staff. And the question of how many families are going to choose the 4515 at Longfellow? And that's something we will have some data on in the short term, knowing with the expanded, expanded boundary, how many of those families are going to opt for that. So again, those are just some of the things that we have identified and we're working on and, and we need to resolve and address these issues to help assure a smooth transition to our new buildings in the fall of 22 or the summer of 22.
Thank you, Mr. Bakken. Questions from board members? Mr. Barlow.
Hi, it's Carl. I know I might be early in the process, but is there a projected timeframe, timeline as to when these dominoes might begin to fall into place?
Yes, we've, we've started for our second meeting and we just had to, after identifying the issues, what we did is started to create a timeline and then in between getting feedback on that, what do we need to add? Is this the right approximate time? We have started that timeline, yes.
And then in regards to potential board involvement and or board approval, are you anticipating or Superintendent Pecal, are you anticipating issues being brought before that will require?
Thank you, Dr. Barlow. The one that Carl mentioned that is a subject of conversation, in fact, I have a meeting early tomorrow on it and then another on Friday, is this wonderful model that we have at Longfellow that is often called 4515, where kids go to school for 45 days and then they have 15 days off. It's highly prized by certain families and we are moving a relatively small school with that model into a much larger space. And so increasing the number of families who want that model, which is very different than the traditional school year, is a question because we don't want a lot of empty space in any building. And so there are potentially some creative things. We could have other programming in that building if demand for it isn't sufficient. When I went out and met with the Longfellow staff during one of my first weeks here, the, what I learned subsequently, longstanding desire for a middle school with that model also came up. So this is one that is going to need some relatively quick decision-making. And so as Carl mentioned, we're going to get feedback from families about what their options and interests are. I could imagine bringing action to the board if we believe we need to deviate from the initial plan because there's not going to be sufficient demand to fill the new building. So that's probably issue number one, I would say. The other issue is that, of course, we're also concurrent with the work Carl mentioned implementing boundary changes and we're on the cusp of studying our changes in start times. And so all of these things potentially could come together before the board for some decisions in the winter and spring, depending on what we, what, what we find when we start to put all these moving pieces together. So tonight's focus is the opening and in one case a Freidel closing of a school, but those other boundary change and start time issues all connect, especially because there's only so many buses and only so many drivers and only so many dollars in the bank. So Carl, would you highlight any other issue that you think?
That is the main one that comes to, to mind. But again, we are, it's a work in progress and two meetings in and we'll be, that's, that's part of the reason we identified the need to meet frequently because of the number of issues and how intertwined they are and how complex it is.
Yes, Ms. Nathan.
Superintendent, do you think? We'll have regular updates on a monthly or bimonthly basis to the board or when there's a milestone?
If the board has found this valuable, we'd be thrilled to do that. We kind of wanted to put this on as an initial down payment and we'd be glad to give you updates. I think as Carl mentioned to Dr. Barlow's question, we are on the cusp of a clear timeline and I could work with the chair and the vice chair to decide at which points an update for the board would make the most sense. Certainly we'll be bringing any decisions for you, but I think I get the sense of a lot of interest from board members in the nuts and bolts of this process. And so we'd be, we'd be pleased to bring that. We also could bring some of the building leaders who are living through this change at the building level through to give you their perspective on it because of course they have as much change or actually arguably more change in their world than what we're dealing with here centrally. So we'd be pleased to look at that. We could tie that to our annual calendar updates.
And Mr. Bakken, we know you're always thrilled to present to the board, just like the highlight of your week. It's only Tuesday. Good. Okay, any other comments, questions? Thank you. This was really valuable. Thank you. And you did great. We'll go back a step, not in terms of professionalism, but to 4.02 referendum projects update information item. Dr. Pecal.
And now it's my pleasure to introduce Scott Sheridan, our executive director of operations, to give the board and the community an update on the related changes we are making in our physical infrastructure in Rochester. Thank you, Scott.
Good evening, board members. This is the 21st referendum update, not that I'm counting, but 21. The presentation I'm going to go over with you real quickly. You've already had the opportunity to review it, but I think it's nice to have the public be able to view some of the photos and where we're at with the construction of the five major projects that we're working on. Keon McWaters, whom you all know, he put this together. I'm not taking any credit for it. I'm just running through it and talking about it. We gave him the night off so that he could stay home. So this is a, a shot of Dakota Middle School, but I'll get into the, the school that's complete first. This is Overland Elementary. This is a picture of it, a rendering of it. This is what it looks like. Hopefully you've been out to have a chance to walk through. And this is the interior. You'll notice all the baffles in the ceiling. This is a group learning space out in the hallway, not really a hallway, but it's a space that's utilized by the row of classrooms, the grades that are all along that particular wing on that particular floor. And each of the floors have a group learned space similar to this that is utilized by the multiple classrooms that are along each wing and the different grades. Some interior shots with the color schemes, shot of the cafeteria. And this is the media center. It's a really neat looking media center, has a lot of glass in it. And this, the glass overlooks the stairwell and, and the walking path. Really nicely done. And this is a classroom. You'll notice the, the working board that's there and the teacher work area, students sitting on the floor and the view out the window. That's to the north. That's to all the trees that are on that property, which is probably about five or six of them. But it's a pretty nice shot that looks to the north out of Overland. Mechanical room that I'm sure you intimately want to know all about. Any questions on this photo? I can. Okay. And then the middle school. Overland is complete and the students have been in there since the start of the school year. They got it done in 11 months like they had planned. And there is still some punchless stuff that they're working on that there's, they still need to work on, but, but otherwise it's gone relatively smoothly the first few months. The middle school, Dakota, the next six weeks, they have a list of what they expect to be doing. If you get out there, if you've been out there, you'll notice that it's, as you approach on 65th Street, it, it's kind of hard to see because it's up on a hill and it's kind of like a walkout in the back. So there's three stories on the back, which I believe we have a shot of. But this is the gym, working on the ceiling, boilers. That's the racetrack. Oh, wait, no, that's not, that's the park, that's the bus round. Looks like a racetrack. Hey, I don't know. Racing background. But that's a drop off there. The front is right where you see the green. That's the front entrance. The gyms are over to the right of that. And then on the back are the educational wings with this three floors. And it has a tremendous view out the back to the north and it goes on for, you could see for miles and miles and miles. You can actually see Highway 52 way, way off in the distance on the right from the third floor when you're looking out the back. This is looking east. This is looking south. This is the back of the, the school with the three floors. You see the, the middle there is the, where the media center is. Longfellow Elementary, this one has really come along really well. This is the property that's being built just south of the Armory that we had a contract with Park and Rec where we did a land swap with them, if you remember. And we gave them the current Longfellow property and they gave us the property out at the soccer fields just south of the Armory. And we took about a fourth of that area out there and are building our school. This is some retention, under stormwater retention. It's where all the water is going to be stored underneath this hard surface area. This is the concrete that was poured on the floor. And this is looking to the southwest of the drone shot. And so the Armory would be off to the right and the soccer field you can see in the background that we are, we're going to revamp for Park and Rec. Park and Rec is still going to use them as a soccer field. They're also going to utilize some of our parking lot on off hours in order to utilize for the soccer practices and teams after hours. This is another shot looking east that looks at Marion Road, which is running kind of along the top there. And if you see the driveway, it's kind of a little to the left of center. That's where the traffic light's going to go and it'll be a cross there, a crossing for students. So they're moving the traffic light from the current spot at Longfellow and moving it down to that location. And then they're going to dismantle the one up at the current Longfellow. And this is all part of the work that we've done with the county and with some state aid and with the city. This is looking to the north, well, kind of northeast. That's the southeast view again. So Harriet Bishop Elementary has come along as well. LHB and CRW are the principal architects on the four schools, but CRW was the primary on this building. And if you get out there and you're going to see a little touch of a little different design based on the LHB designs. LHB uses more of the metal cladding at their front entrances, like the copper and aluminum front entrance. And CRW uses more of a design within the precast and to add some character to the building. And this one is, as you know, is being built on the north side of the current property. They tore down the original building already. And it's much farther along than these pictures show, but on the far right there is West Circle Drive. So 36th Avenue would be to the left. That's the main entrance on 36th. What you see in that concrete structure there, that's the gym. And the neighborhoods. Now we're kind of looking northwest, a little further northwest. Then there's also the Century High School pool addition. This is being designed by WSN and Knutson is our CMA on it as well. And this is being built on the north side of Century off the North Cafeteria. So the North Cafeteria is the kind of curvy lines there. That was added on to Century a number of years ago to add more cafeteria space. And the pool is going to be going right where you see the, the backhoe working. And it's going to be butted up to the gym, which is on the left there. They're going to be starting the precast. I don't know if they have already or not. I haven't been out there this week yet, but they're supposed to be doing the precast. It's supposed to be coming and get the precast up. I know the foundation's in already. And once they start putting the walls up, it goes fairly quickly. What we had to do is move the driveway out. You'll notice how it jots out around. We still use the backlot for bus service, so the students get dropped off on the back of Century. So we had to keep that drive open. It is gravel, but the buses are still able to utilize it. We had to take a little bit of the athletic field to do so. So the budget on all these are, are on, are all about what we expected, about 32 million for the elementaries and then 55 million for the middle school. The pool's at 16.3, almost 16, $4 million. And when he's talking about schedule, within two weeks is good. Green is good. When it starts turning yellow and red, that's when we have a problem. Obviously, one of the major concerns was the, the lead times on a lot of the materials that's due to COVID and the transportation issues of getting the materials around, but we've been very lucky. A lot of our contractors pre-ordered long ago and so that helped us tremendously to get the, to stay on schedule. As you know, the Mayo Pool, that's still being designed by WSN and that's going to be funded by long-term facility maintenance revenue with some bonds. The middle school pool is still part of the referendum project. We're waiting until all the pools are done before we decide how we're going to do the middle schools. So that might not be till 2023 or possibly even 2024 till we get to that. The emergency notification systems are about, almost half done. There's still more to do next summer. And, and that's the emergency notification system that has a fire alarm, weather alert and active threat buttons that are located in the office manager's area to utilize in the event of one of those. the event of one of those situations occurring. And the secured entries are almost complete. We're just waiting on the Freidel to decide what we're doing with the Freidel building, but all the secure entries are now completed. And the auditorium renovations, those are long done. Seems like a long time ago, but it was actually just last summer. And we still have some money held, 1.6 million for land purchases for future buildings. John and our realtor group have been still actively looking for property there. When you add it all up, we're at about 183.2 million dollars. Our budget, referendum budget, based on what the voters approved, was 180.9 million. So we're about 2.3 million over. And it is a scary figure, obviously, but John has that magic in his back pocket where we have some interest on the 180 million dollars that we got from the voters. And so there's some wiggle room there that we have interest dollars still out there that we can apply to cover that 2.3 million dollar deficit. And these are the schedules. The colors don't mean anything, and they just make it look fancy. But the schedules for each of the projects have been provided to you as well to review. All the buildings, the four buildings are scheduled to be done prior to the start of next fall. Turnover on some of the buildings are going to be sooner than later. Obviously, the Longfellow one is going to come in June 15th. It'll be turned over to us because school starts at the end of July. The pool won't be completed at Century until, it's expected to be completed about September 15th or so on that one. And the other projects are listed there as well. So more than willing to answer any questions you might have.
I have more comments than a question.
Yes, go ahead.
If I have questions, I will yield until the end.
You want, you want best to last? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Barlow and then Ms. Workman.
Chair Marvin, I did speak with Mr. Carlson earlier regarding the comment I'm about to make. And today, as most of us would be knowledgeable of, there was a shooting, a high school shooting in Michigan. And that caused me to reflect on the referendum projects, specifically the secure main entrances, entrances, as well as the door locking systems and the emergency notification system. And I asked Scott, well, how does, how do we fare? Does our district, when there is a shooting, do we, is there staff routinely deployed to evaluate, to debrief, to consider what our action steps or plans might be should something similar like that occur? And Scott assured me that we're on top of that. And my purpose of raising the issue at this point is to perhaps give Scott the opportunity to speak maybe more broadly to the community and parents who may share concerns as it relates to the safety, the security of our buildings and how they can learn to rest. And then potentially, in that it was a student, a 15-year-old, perhaps parents having conversations with their kids, you know, not just in regards to gun safety, but the appropriateness of the use of, and then the fear, the social emotional component, that even though that was in Michigan, some of our students might have a concern as well.
Thank you, Director Barlow. Yes, Director Barlow and I did talk briefly prior to the board meeting, but what I'd like to reiterate, when I first came here in 2014, I was hired as a security person to, as a role of performance management, security. Since that time, obviously, my position has morphed into different things. But one of the, my pet projects at the time was, the school district already had the buzzer systems in place when I came, which is wonderful. But what we noticed rather quickly was the secure entry piece where ideally, any visitors or people that come through should go through a single point of entry, get vetted through an office, and before they can be allowed into the building. And prior to the secure entry projects, that wasn't the case at all the buildings. And so we took that as a task, part of our referendum, and the public approved it. And we spent a lot of time, and as you can tell, money, on upping that. We also have that raptor system that's used for anybody that visits the school, where their name, they provide their name, and they're run through the system for identification purposes. But probably most importantly, particularly to address what Director Barlow was talking about that happened at Oxford Hills in Michigan today, we also hired a coordinator of district safety and security now that's been in place for about three or four months. My duties were getting rather extensive and spread out. And so we saw the need to have someone that directly focused on the safety and security of the buildings. And we hired Julie Kleiman to come and do that. She's been doing a fantastic job. She's only been here three months, but she's, does a great job. She's the one that informed me about what happened in Oxford Hills right away when it happened. So she was on top of it. She works with the police department, SROs. All the SROs met with their administrators immediately after what happened today to reaffirm what's, you know, our security and safety procedures. So they were, this is what I've been told, that from the SRO sergeant, that they've already met with the administrators at the secondary sites. But I think most importantly, what we do here that I don't think a lot of school districts do, we have a threat assessment team, an in-house threat assessment team that reviews, that includes social workers, counselors, administrators, a district staff that review potential situations that might arise. And if they feel that it reaches the level of a potential threat to the site itself, then they might notify law enforcement. But otherwise, they handle them in-house within, in the district. And they utilize all types of resources to do those threat assessments. It's a very comprehensive system that they use. It's national type of training that they go to, that they're well-versed in. And that's probably the most significant thing that we utilize to combat situations like this. But, and we also have other systems in place that pay attention to messaging and traffic, traffic going back and forth through accounts and email accounts and that kind of thing as well. So we have a very comprehensive system in place. We can always get better. And no matter what we do, we can't prevent everything. But we do have a really good handle on where we're at. And I'm never, I, I'm never comfortable. We're always looking forward. There's always new information and new ways to do things that come out. And we're always actively looking for those and researching those to see if they would be important to implement here in the district.
Thank you. And Ms. Workman.
Yeah, this was a really serious subject, and I hadn't intended to comment on that. But I really want to thank you for your explanation and for all the efforts that all of our employees are making in order to keep our students as safe as possible. I remember when I was a little girl, we had duck and cover drills hiding under our desk. And apparently, things have changed a lot since then, so it's a real challenge. My real question, though, was if board members would like to visit some of these sites, should we just contact you, your office, and arrange it? Or how would you like us to handle that?
For Overland, you're more than welcome just to go and go through the process to get in, since it's an active school. But if it's under construction, you can go through myself, Bill Burt at Construction Services, or Leah Barbosa, who, she can take you through as well, or make the arrangements. They do like to know that you're coming so that they can, you can do the pre-COVID tests stuff and they get you a hard hat, safety glasses, and a vest. And then they'll walk you around and take you to the areas that they can show you. There's some places you can't go, like you can't be walking under cranes and things like that. But they'd be more than, they're always welcome, you're always welcome to come out and do a walkthrough of those buildings.
I've been on a number of sites, you know, in various stages of construction. It's really interesting to me. I know my fellow board members have as well. So thank you for that information. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Jess.
So I also see that my colleague has the same piece of paper. But one of the things that's listed in the background is how those referendum dollars were also used to update our high school auditoriums. And so I had gone to see all three high school fall shows. So I saw Blythe Spirit at Century. I saw Little Shop of Horrors at JM. And I also saw the Addams Family at Mayo. And one of the things that Mayo put in their program, which I wanted to just read as like a thank you to you, it's also titled, "Thank You to Our Rochester Community." This kind of shows, I think, what act, how active these, how actively these things are impacting our students. So I will just read the bit out of their, out of their program. It says, "Thank you to our Rochester community. In the fall of 2019, you had a choice. You approved a referendum to equip all three Rochester High Schools with new lighting and sound equipment. Thank you. Burnt light sockets on rails above our stage had us worried, and cracked glass, I'm sorry, cracked glass light fronts literally fell into the audience from the catwalk due to heat, pressure, and timing, and had us managing safety as best we could. We ran out of warehouses in North America that could supply replacement light bulbs for our incandescent lights. We rented lights with money from ticket sales to augment the impact of our performances. Similarly, sound systems upgraded simply did not happen after 9/11/2021, or 2001, when the FCC restricted frequencies and wireless communication and soundboard operations. For years, we contracted out to companies to work with us, and we patched speakers and mics and cables and headsets together. We rented mics, and we purchased some mics and a soundboard when we enjoyed money from ticket sales. When you bought tickets or donated, we put the money right back into our program so we could produce quality performances with students who wanted to learn theater. Then you voted. You voted your belief in us. New light and sound systems were installed a year ago, and the pandemic prevented us from learning how to operate them. It felt like a Lamborghini waited for us in a garage just outside a door we couldn't yet drive, until now. The Addams Family is the first full production that we are using the new equipment. We're still learning what these new systems are capable of, and we're so grateful for the opportunity to learn theater with state-of-the-art equipment. You voted your belief in arts education. We will keep producing quality shows for you as we learn and grow. Thank you, Mayo Stagedore Cast, Crew, and Pit Orchestra musicians and their directors." So thank you.
That's exactly accurate. And thank you to the citizens and the community for voting for that referendum and you for approving the, all the dollars that we put to it.
And what a great way to end your presentation. So thank you so much, Scott.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. 5.04 Legislative Priorities Discussion and Adoption. This is a briefing item. Dr. Pikel or Policy Committee?
Sure. I'll start. Board members, you have in board docs the legislative priorities that we finally landed on as being our focus for this next year. Understanding that this coming session is not a funding year, but we want to basically kind of keep earworms on them so that when the time rolls around the following year, that they will be well-prepared for what we have to say because they will have heard it before. So the first one, stabilize the education funding system and ensure taxpayer equity. As all of us know, and I will remind the community, each year, we have our dollars, or each funding session, we have our, we receive the state funding for our district. Usually, this happens after we've had to do staffing and all that kind of thing. So it's sort of backwards. So one of the proposals is that we have a built-in 2% increase each year and that it also be tied to inflation, which would really relieve a lot of the pressure that school districts, including ours, have in terms of making their, their final budgeting decisions. Number two, find a better way to measure and support students living in poverty. Last year was different for our students, obviously. One of the big differences was that they did not have to fill out any forms to benefit from free or reduced lunches. But those forms are the ones that also give us compensation dollars. Do I have the right word? Compensatory funds? Is that the right word?
Compensatory.
Okay. Compensatory funds from the state. So we're looking for a better system that's more fair, that would include more families who really are needing these funds, but for whatever reason have not taken the time to go through the forms. And it's, it's more complicated this year, too, because we still have free breakfast and free lunch for all students. So a lot of parents don't see the necessity in filling out those forms, understandably so. I'm going to skip number three for the moment. Number four, support expanding full-service community schools funding. Once again, this is something I think that our district has been a leader in the state on with our community schools. And it's something that Minnesota School Board Association and affiliated schools are also very interested in having the opportunity to be able to begin or fund community schools. So these, these three, number one, number two, and number four, are all issues that most school districts statewide encounter. Number three is unique to Rochester. Lay the groundwork for sustaining PTAC. It started here, and the statute, which is, I won't read the whole thing to you, 124D.093, subdivision five, says, "When an appropriation is available," which is very nebulous, like, okay, when it is, not will it be, if it is, "each PTAC school is eligible for grant to start up, to support startup and ongoing program costs." So we've had our support for our startup costs, which was basically planning for this school year. These program, ongoing program costs, which may include, but are not limited to recruitment, student support, program materials, and PTAC school liaisons. An approved PTAC school is eligible to receive a grant to support startup costs the year before first enrolling PTAC students. There's nothing really substantial in here that really is, makes it clear as to what any additional ongoing funding will be. I think this is really important for our program here because we've had a tremendous response from students and parents who are very interested in this. And this is the kind of thing we would like to be able to see it through for not only the first group of students this year, but for all the following years for other students. So right now, I think the funding issue is kind of mushy. And I really appreciate all the work that Senator Carla Nelson put into this. So I think it would be good for all of us to ask her again if she would be willing to expand on this so that we can continue with this funding.
Thank you. And I call you the Policy Committee. You're the Legislative Committee.
Yes.
So I just want to make sure everybody gets that. Thank you. Yes, Ms. Amundson.
And a few years back, there was a study session with at least one legislator present where we discussed issues. And that legislator requested that if we had items that we wanted her to consider for the upcoming session, that we meet with her in November, December. Are there any plans for the Legislative Committee, once this is approved, to formally present our thoughts and priorities to our local legislators?
I can respond to that on behalf of the Legislative Committee. We did discuss that. The question is the timing of it. We definitely want to speak with our legislators about these four priorities and why they're important to the district. The concern about the timing, though, is with the redistricting that's going on. Without knowing exactly where districts are going to fall, it may make sense to learn where those district decisions are made. And one of the things we talked about is actually doing a day at the Capitol for the district, going up and meeting with them in their offices at the Capitol to ensure that they understand how important these priorities are to the district.
So the Legislative Session will start in January, yes?
Right.
So if we wanted somebody to carry in some kind of legislation, we would need to give them some heads up and warning?
We could, yes. We were thinking about meeting with them more in the March timeframe, but if we need to look at proposed legislation, we can reach out earlier than that.
And I believe I remember that the request was November or December. Is that what, those of you who are here, do you remember?
Yes, that is correct. I think this year is unusual because we had the 2020 census and we are redistricting. The legislature is required to have their lines drawn by February fifteenth or have something. In my experience, that doesn't happen very often, and then there is another group that, apart from the legislature, that's also working on these boundaries, that will have something to present if, to the legislature if it can't agree on where those boundaries, districting lines should be. And I think that is supposed to be done by the middle of March. So I think that, that was one reason why we hesitated on doing anything with our legislators right now, and plus which, I think the following year is the year it's really going to hit because that's the year they give us.
But, but meanwhile, there's still our legislators regardless of where the lines are going. And so if, if, if the Legislative Session is commencing and there's legislation that needs to be introduced, that has nothing to do with waiting for boundary lines, does it? Am I totally missing something obvious here?
I guess the question will be, how much will be presented in this session as a bonding year?
Okay.
That, I think that limits, rather than policy. I think that potentially limits what will, what will be happening this year.
Ms. Nathan.
Well, I just want to thank the Legislative Committee and especially Director Workman. I know that this has been a passion of yours for a number of years, that you've wanted to see the board pursue some sort of formal legislative agenda, and you've been sort of carrying this torch for a while. So thanks for your leadership and for all of the work of the other members of the committee. I think this is, this is very important for R P S to have a voice at the Capitol. We are competing always for funds, and to have a strategy like this is just going to be good for the short and long term. So, thanks.
I, yeah, I'd like to thank my colleagues, Director McLaughlin and Director Garcia, too, because, you know, I, we didn't do this before because I knew I could not do all this work by myself, and you two women have really contributed so much and have helped us get where we are. The, the committee is still having some growing pains, but there are a lot of districts that have had legislative committees established for years, so it's been helpful to look and see what some of their processes have been as well. So, thank you, Director Nathan, for that.
And I would add my comment to Director Nathan's comment, that that's two of, some of the reasons why we looked at number three and number four, is number three is specific to Rochester right now because P-Tech is, is only located in Rochester, and the funding would clearly impact that Rochester program, but also the community schools, that it, I think it really speaks to what this district needs to assist our students and families, that adding that priority. I think we were originally thinking of three, and we added number four to make sure that we were covering that important need in the district as well.
Mr. Barlow.
Yes, I just want to lend my support to Director Amundson's comment. I do recall Senator Nelson specifically saying she would prefer to be contacted directly. And whereas the boundary changes are very important, we've yet to, to my knowledge, meet with other local legislatures. Senator Nelson was the only one we did meet with. And I think as a, not so much a courtesy, but to respond to her suggestion that we do that, I would strongly suggest, and I trust the, the direction of the Legislative Priorities Committee will make, but to just remind you that she did say, "Give us the approval to go ahead and reach out to her."
Now, a question for the Legislative Committee. You have a resolution here. I don't know if board members feel that they have studied this enough. We did get a much more lengthy briefing, written briefing on these, but for your committee, do you have an appetite to move this to action or not at this time?
We could, we could maybe give the board another week if they want, and then have this come back on the consent agenda at our next meeting on December seventh. I think that would give us enough time, although certainly if somebody would like to move it to action tonight, I'm not going to object.
Neither would I. I said, neither would I.
I, I, if there aren't concerns being voiced by my colleagues, I would move it to action.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to move this to action. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's now an action item. Be it resolved that I S D five thirty-five adopts the following legislative priorities for 2022. One, stabilize the education funding system and ensure taxpayer equity. Two, find a better way to measure and support students living in poverty. Three, lay the groundwork for sustaining P-Tech. And four, urge the legislature to expand full-service community schools funding to schools wishing to participate.
Move approval.
Second. Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Our legislative priorities have been discussed and adopted, and continue doing the good work. Thank you.
Chair Marvin, I have one more question as to how the board would like us to proceed. Would you like the Legislative Committee to make contacts with specifically Senator Nelson and perhaps others this December? Is this something that you would prefer to do individually as board members, which is certainly an option? Thoughts?
I'll pipe in. I, I think having the Legislative Committee take the lead, and then, once you've made that first contact, perhaps then you can report back to the board on how we might individually be able to write or share or call with individual legislators to support the agenda.
Great. Thank you.
And with the message that this has the support of the entire board, so, thank you. We will move on then to board member committee updates. Do any board members have any report from the committee work they've been doing? Ms. Workman.
I do, I'll have a better report next week, but Director Amundson and I are going to be virtually attending the Delegate Assembly this weekend on December three and four, and these are the resolutions that we've been instructed to study. Of course, we both have them totally memorized, backwards, forwards, and upside down, but in looking at the table of contents, which I also believe that you received at some point, you can see that so many of these affect Rochester and really are endemic to the state. So I will let you know next time, or Director Amundson can certainly chime in next time.
It's my first assembly. I'm going to let Julie do the talking.
And you're talking about the Minnesota School Boards.
School Board Association and Delegate Assembly.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Consent agenda. Any items to be removed for separate consideration?
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. And Dr. Pecel, would you like to note the retirees?
I would be glad to, and I actually brought it this time.
There you go.
So I don't need to depend on the chair. This is, for those who don't know, this is a longstanding tradition, and for me, it's always a little awkward because I'm, in most cases, I haven't met these folks, but I'm nonetheless excited to have a chance to thank Paul Larson, who's been our Planetary Director at Mayo High School, who is retiring at the end of June of this school year. He's been with us for eight years. Mary Wagner, who's Assistant Principal's Secretary at John Adams, who will be retiring at the end of January, who's been with the district for 29 years. Mark Freeman, who is Custodian One at Century High School, retiring at the end of this calendar year. He's been with us for nine years. Curtis Haugen, Custodian Two at John Adams Middle School, retiring at the end of January 2022. He's been with us for 17 years. Michael Anthony Salit, or Saleh, I apologize if I'm not getting that right, Assistant Custodian Engineer Two at Rochester Alternative Learning Center, retiring effective at the end of this calendar year. He's been with us for five years. And so we thank all of those people for their service and their leadership and wish them well in their next chapters.
Thank you. Six point oh one, overview of the school site improvement plans. This is an information item. Dr. Pecel.
Dr. Marvin and Directors of the Board, there are two items on tonight's agenda that really came from the work that the Policy Committee has been doing and which continues to look deeply at the school district's policies to be sure that we are fully meeting the intent in the letter of those policies. And through that process, which was kind of a little bit like forensic science or archaeology, we discovered there were some important things that were not previously happening, and so we are beginning to add those to the board's annual processes. The first agenda item is an update for the board on our school site improvement plans, which are the plans that each school does to set priorities for their improvement work for the year. And the second is an overview of staff development. So we'll take those two separately. They both have leadership from Brenda, Brenda Witchman, who's our Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction. I will say in advance that in both of these cases, as we've added these to the agenda, we see this as a first pass at updates to the board on these issues. So for instance, policy actually requires and asks for a written report on professional development. This year, candidly, as we put in place this new calendar, we weren't ready to provide the board with that written report, so you're going to get a presentational overview tonight of that, but in future years, as we are able to be more planful about these agenda items, we will build on these initial presentations. And so our first overview, and we have got an all-star team of folks from our school levels and our central office level to talk about what are their priorities in their school site improvement plans. And so I'll let Brenda take over and share these issues. I see Jackie Peterson, our Executive Director of Elementary and Secondary Education, so joining Brenda and the Dream Team here. And so thank you very much. We'll start with this overview of our school site improvement plans.
Chair Marvin, members of the board, and Interim Superintendent Pecel, we are delighted to be with you tonight to talk about our site improvement planning process, and thank you so much for your archaeological dig. You're, you're keeping us very busy, but we hope sharing information, we know that's a good thing. So, this planning process begins, principals might begin pulling data at the very end of the school year, but we start this process with a data retreat, and I think you've heard about that, in mid-August, early to mid-August. Two days where we bring improvement plan teams from each building together. Pre-pandemic, we would meet generally at John Adams, and then we'd start with a kickoff all together, maybe a review of district-level data, system data, and then the buildings would all go into a separate room and start to review their data and work on their plan for the upcoming year. We have done that more virtually in the past two years, but it's still occurring. And, and honestly, some of our buildings prefer to meet on-site. We have some sites that are starting to have students come to these data retreats, so we think that's very powerful. This is district-funded. We use district professional development dollars to pay for it. Then usually, at the end of those two days or shortly thereafter, the sites have their plans done, and they submit them to me, and then I put them in a folder and share them with all of the cabinet members. So that, I just wanted to share the template. This isn't the actual template, but what we ask them to provide is, you know, the problem of practice. What is it that you're looking at, and, and what are you seeing in your data? And then we want them to analyze, really ask those five whys. Like, you know, if we're working on student attendance, why do we think students aren't attending? Well, they're not attending because, you know, they, they aren't getting up on time or, you know, and then to just keep digging into the why, 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 to get to the root cause. And then that theory of action, like, if we spend more time sharing practices around the class tool rubric, we will have more engaging classroom instruction, our students will be more engaged. And then what are the actions that you're going to do? What are the outcomes? And then it's really laid out in a monthly progress monitoring format, and that really guides the work of the sites for the year. And when Jackie and I and Carla and all cabinet members are out coaching and talking to principals, you know, we'll ask them about their site plan and, and how things are going and what we can do to support them. Also during the data retreat, I want to mention that we have district-level staff, you know, the Heather and Peter who work in C and I, and Carla's, you know, team of directors, and Jackie's directors, they can sign up. Like, we want Brandon McCraffick to come talk to us a little bit about data. We want Kim McDonald to come and share some E L strategies or talk about things. So we really try to provide support during that time. So, we do anticipate that with newly updated strategic plan, this process might change a little because your site plan should be very much tied to your district strategic plan. So, we are open to that change, and we will make sure that we provide the professional development needed if we do change this process a little bit. So, we've reviewed, Jackie and I have reviewed all of the site plans, and Jackie's going to share some just updates of just kind of what the big ideas were.
So I'm going to go off script for a second and say that the data retreat started prior to, Brenda and I were both principals when the data retreat began, so we can't take credit for this brilliant idea, but it is really a very powerful two days. And I was just recalling when I was principal at Riverside, we really revamped our site leadership team and process for school improvement, and one of the things that we learned through working with the Centers of Excellence is that we were not meeting often enough. It's typical that a site leadership team would meet once a month, and really it needs to be more often than that and for more time. And I remember our advocate after two days at John Adams saying to us, "Do you realize you just did like 10 site leadership meetings in these two days that we accomplished so much because there was continual time? We didn't have starts and stops and refreshing where we were." So these two days are super powerful, and our principals spend, and our leadership teams spend a lot of time planning for these so that we're really utilizing these times to the, to the point where we're bringing lunch in so we don't have to stop working. So I really just want to highlight how important these two days are and that they really do result in some great ideas and, and planning. So as Brenda and I sat down and took a look, and actually Carla, too, took, because we think of ourselves as the instructional cabinet, we took a look at the focus of each of the plans, and what we did is really saw that there were three different kind of themes that came up. There's a huge amount of focus on building sense of belonging in that S E L piece in a great deal of the plans, and focusing on school, this positive school climate. So, less academic but more climate and culture building, and a, and a great emphasis on amplifying student voice, which we love because we know that's where we really get, we get good plans in place that are meaningful for students. So a little bit, these are just some strategies that were highlighted, we wanted to highlight out of the many plans that, that have been written. A couple of our buildings are doing the I D I for all staff and follow-ups to those. A lot of student panel, so getting that student voice and giving students an opportunity throughout the year to share their thoughts and ideas. There's some use of restorative practices where buildings have specifically undergone training. You can't just plop those things in, you need to have agreement among, among staff and training. C L R T, culturally and linguistically responsive teaching, is highlighted among many of our plans. Family listening posts. P V I S comes up quite a bit. All of our schools are invested in P V I S, and some are doing a reboot after being away and into distance learning for, for so long. You'll hear a little bit from Eric in a minute about building flexible schedules to meet the needs of students, and a great focus on building school community among families and community partners. And then not to leave off academic goals because those are truly important, but I do want to highlight that this is, this is a, a change for us that you used to read our site plans, and they were all academically focused, and we're really proud that our buildings are highlighting and focusing on S E L because we know that when, if there's not that foundation of relationships and a, a strong sense of positive culture, that learning, it's hard for learning to take place. So, we do applaud buildings for having those S E L goals, but we do have academic goals as well, much of them focused on improving core instruction, which we love because we know that that is the best bang for the buck, that our, our core instruction really should get at 80% of, of the student needs, hopefully. There's an early literacy focus, and a lot of that may be linked to the work that Brenda's department has done in the literacy partnership work that has been going on for the last couple of years in kindergarten and first grade. The creation of, creating more engaging learning environments, the rigor and The creation of, creating more engaging learning environments, the rigor and relevance framework that we had been working with. And then finally, we have one school that's highly focused on differentiation. So those are some of the pieces that we wanted to just pull out and highlight for you. It certainly doesn't highlight everything that we found in the plans, but these are some of the key themes. And then just, I'll leave this up here, but you can see that it's not enough to just say these are the things we're focusing on. We have, buildings are listing what their strategies are in order to get to those. So you can see on this slide some of the things that buildings are doing to achieve their goals. I can get, I'll, do you want to go ahead with the monitoring?
So we do, we did look at how they are monitoring the goals, and so these are just some of the ways that they're doing that. They're using, you know, we've talked a lot about FastBridge and that Hagerty, and really great readings, some formative assessments, panorama, site developed surveys, MCA's, lots of different ways that they are monitoring their goals. So Jackie and I could, we did sit up here and tell you about what it looks like, but we felt like it would be very powerful for you to hear directly from a couple of expert practitioners who have done a model job of not only leading their sites through the data retreat, but their development of their site plans. So first, Eric Johnson from John Marshall High School.
Good evening. It occurred to me that it was about a year ago that I last spoke to you, and I think at that time it was via Microsoft Teams. I was in my office, I had some really nice cue cards that you couldn't see in the background, so it was very polished, and I don't want to be winging it just a little bit more because I can't have those cue cards in front of me. But at the time, one of the things I shared with you is that I felt that as we were preparing to return to in-person instruction, we were at a really pivotal point where we needed to use the opportunity provided to us to fundamentally change what our instruction looked like. I'd love to tell you tonight that that's what I'm going to share with you tonight, that we have done it, we have fundamentally changed the course of what our instructional practices look like. I don't know that I can do that. What I can tell you is that right after that presentation, the conversation started in our building. And members of our building leadership team started showing up in the building again, even when, you know, when it was their distance learning time, they'd come into the classroom, teach from the building so that we could have these conversations. And the first thing that we realized was that we needed more than two days in August to get ready for what the school year looked like. We needed to start having that conversation right away. And then the other thing that became really, really apparent to me at John Marshall was this idea that school leadership is a club, that there's certain teachers who are, you know, are designated leaders, and they're the ones who are going to help us drive what our instructional practices look like. We really wanted to open that conversation up to everybody. And so some things started to gel. And then the next piece was that as we look at what our data looks like, that those data pieces that we take with us to the data retreat in August, COVID really threw us some curveballs. We didn't have the same kind of data that we normally have. So we had to look at, how can we do this differently? And so... I just wore the arrow off. So we started looking at our leadership team, and we had representatives from every department in the building. We had members of our social workers, we had our counselors, there are instructional coaches, our full-service community schools, specialists. We really tried to make it a representative group, but we still wanted to continue to expand that conversation. We looked at the data that we did have. We had our panorama data from spring, which wasn't great. It showed us that our kids really felt like we didn't have the strong relationship that we had had in the past. We looked at our We Lead survey data, that data of, you know, how the building feels about not only its administrative leadership, but its leadership culture in the building. That comes back to this idea that there's this exclusive club of leaders, and we really need to open that conversation up. And so then one of the things we talked about next was, well, how can we start to do that? And a couple of our members of our leadership team said, "How about we really start having this conversation ongoing throughout the summer?" And this idea that if you want to be part of the conversation about what leadership looks like in our building, you're welcome to the table, and let's make this really easy for you. And so we had our first conversation the day after school got out, and we called this the Meetings of the Minds. And the idea was, if you work at JM and you have something to say about the direction of the school, you are welcome. And we're going to have some of these meetings in the building, and some of these were going to meet off-site. So throughout the summer, we had this series of meetings, all the Meetings of the Minds. They were facilitated by one of our teachers and one of our instructional coaches. Sometimes I came, and sometimes I didn't. And that was very intentional, so that sometimes if teachers wanted to have a safe space to talk without a principal there, they could. But these were carefully facilitated discussions, there was really close notes that were kept, and we started to build some really good anecdotal data about our building. We started to hear what our teachers were thinking about what instruction could look like. And one of the things that became very, very clear to us was they wanted more voice in how we design our instruction and where we take it next. And so that really informed our academic goal as we get into things. So again, these were really structured discussions, great notes were taken, and that's how we started to get our data. What we landed on for our academic goal then was this, and the theory of actions there, and that's this idea that if staff have an opportunity to really determine what they want to work on and work on it together in their professional growth, they'll not only feel more included in their decision-making, but they'll be part of that leadership team, and they can really drive the direction of our instruction. And that got us to this goal where professional learning teams will engage in staff stores opportunities for growth and professional inquiry in order to improve student learning and engagement. And you've probably heard of professional learning communities. That's where, you know, a group of teachers from the same department might get together, look at a common assessment, look at the results of the assessment, say, "How are we going to change the instruction and get things done differently so we can really get to our kids and help them learn?" And then support our students who are really getting it as well. We still do that, we do that once a week. But what we've added are professional learning teams. Professional learning teams are groups of three to five teachers. And whereas PLCs or professional learning communities are usually within the same department, these people came from all corners of the building. You might have a PE teacher, a social worker, and an English teacher working together on the same topic. But what they wanted to do was, this is an area of interest to me, this is what I want to get in my instruction. And it was like action research. They get together weekly, they investigate, they look for examples, they maybe watch each other teach, and they talk about how they're going to improve their instruction. And so these are some of the examples of what they've landed on. We have Genius Hour, Classroom Culture Strategies, Technology Integration, One-to-One Classroom, phenomena-based instruction, more inclusive classrooms, cross-curricular projects, common rubrics. There's some really cool things that are happening as a result of this. And so when I come back to that idea that we fundamentally changed the course of instruction, we haven't done that. But I see in this the potential to get there. Our teachers are looking for practices that are innovative, and they're working collaboratively across the building to build these practices, and are starting to see some really cool things happen as a result. So where we're at with this right now is just last week, November 24th, our staff had that professional development day, and they did a check-in. Okay, what are your successes? What are your hurdles? What are your future plans? Start thinking, because in a couple of weeks, we're going to meet with members of the curriculum instruction team and share out with our staff celebrations, here's some examples, here's what's going great. And in January, we're going to look and say, okay, is your PLT going to continue? Are you ready to keep doing this the whole year? Or are you ready to try something different? You've got this one down, or maybe it didn't work out, we're going to go in a new direction. And that's what we're doing with our academic goal. Our SEL goal, at John Marshall, we have this thing called Rocket Hour. And what it is, it's an intervention enrichment hour for our students in grades nine and 10 that takes the place of a study hall. It meets, this year it meets eighth hour, and students can self-select going to classes Tuesday through Friday for enrichments, or they can have extra help with a teacher. It's something we've been doing pre-pandemic for a couple of years. Mondays are advisory, and if people haven't seen what an advisory is before, I think about it sort of as a homeroom, which you've all had on steroids. It's a homeroom place where you have a teacher with whom you start to build this relationship, you're meeting weekly, and they have a common lesson. And so what we wanted to do was do something with that common lesson that really reached the whole building. Looking at our panorama data, we saw that our students felt disconnected from their teachers. They didn't have those significant adults in their lives. We also saw the SEL pieces, there are so many pieces of SEL struggle points for our students, that we really wanted to reconnect them. And we said, what is one thing that we can land on that is bedrock for all of our students? And we landed on, it was really easy, it was the graduate profile. And so our advisory committee works to create lessons each Monday that are taught in Rocket Hour, in every single Rocket Hour, that are based on the six pillars of the graduate profile. And so that's our goal. The staff will present these targeted lessons building-wide during weekly Rocket Hour advisory lessons and incorporate them into classroom curriculum focused on the six areas of the graduate profile in order to create meaningful and relevant connections. These take place on Mondays, they're developed by members of our building advisory committee. Tuesday through Friday, those are the days we do our intervention enrichments. So far, we spent October really on that success-ready individual. We felt that was really pertinent, focused on those executive functioning skills, return to study skills, those basics that are so important, one of the things that we really needed coming back from distance learning. November, we focused on skilled communicator. Now we're ramping up for December. I believe the next one is resilient learner. And if it isn't, it needs to be, because it's getting to be that time of year, you know, we're coming up on the end of the semester, so. Bold progress in our SEL. I'm not going to lie to you, there are parts of Rocket Hour that have been really difficult. Our students have had a hard time reconnecting with learning, and so we've worked really hard at that. Last week, I met with the entire ninth grade at a time, and I met with the entire 10th grade at a time to talk about our Rocket Hour expectations and reveal those protocols. Kids were fantastic. They paid such great attention to that discussion, and then afterwards asked some pretty engaging questions. What we found, in addition to that, was we took a survey of them in November, 86.3 of the students in Rocket Hour felt that it was either beneficial or highly beneficial to them. I was really impressed by that. And I think our staff really took that to heart and said, okay, there is some benefit to this, let's keep doing it. The other thing we found through the staff survey in November was that they're seeing improvement in student-teacher relationships as a result of this advisory piece. That's kind of what our goals look like at John Marshall this year.
Thank you, Eric. I don't know if we wanted to entertain any questions now or wait until the end. Do you have any questions specific to John Marshall?
Go ahead, Ms. Amundson.
The Meetings of the Minds, are staff members compensated for the extra time or is that pretty much volunteer?
Nope, it was an open invitation, come if you want, but know that it's completely voluntary. And sometimes we had them at restaurants that had nice patios, so we could be outside and have lunch while we talked, and everyone just kind of got their own lunch. But it was completely open, and our staff did it of their own free will.
Very good.
Mr. Barlow.
The concept of PLTs was quite intriguing, and especially the connection of innovation and collaboration. I was curious though, and there's no way you could have anticipated during this two-day period, what may be occurring in some of our schools in the SEL arena in terms of students. You alluded to it, the difficulty of reconnecting as it relates to learning, but maybe even reconnecting as relates to how to relate to each other and teaching, or teachers rather. So have you been able to incorporate anything through your site improvement plan that has been able to address or tamp that down? Or are you seeing improvement based on any of the strategies that you have presented thus far?
Well, you know, that's a great question. You know, for the most part, we've been seeing a lot of really good student engagement in our regular classrooms. Rocket Hour was a new concept for our students. Even our sophomores coming in didn't have it last year. So this freer piece was more of a challenge for our students. What we did do was we started having Friday meetings of staff, come in, talk, share what's going on, what are your concerns, how can we troubleshoot this as a team? That's where we landed on the first piece, which was having these grade-level meetings. And again, that was just last week. I heard some really great data tonight in the cafeteria during our evening meal from a teacher who said, he was speaking to another teacher, said, "Boy, since we've had those grade-level meetings, things have turned around 100% in my classroom. They've been the best Rocket Hours we've had since then." Now granted, it's only been a couple of days, but that's really encouraging. I think what we need to continue to do as a building is to continue to have those open meeting sessions. We've been doing them on Friday mornings, we just gather in the auditorium if you want to, and let's raise the concern, let's talk about how we're going to troubleshoot it as a building.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, just one question. There seems to be in the community some real misinformation about what social-emotional learning is. So let me just make sure that we've got this clarified. We talked to an early education teacher about this, but when you're talking about the graduate profile that we have in our, all of our guides, that's heavy on social-emotional learning. And what you're doing with the high school kids is helping them develop those skills, like being resilient, being independent, being analytical thinkers, cooperating, being respectful. It's those kind of skills that most families really value too, and you're just helping them apply those to a school setting. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Ms. Workman.
Yeah, I'd like to just extend that a little bit and remind, not us, because we know, but for those who are listening, that our graduate profiles were not something that we invented, but there were extensive community surveys as to what's important, what do you think is important for your child or a child to be able to know and do when they graduate from high school? And then we had a series of meetings, Brenda's nodding her head, with the board where we really defined those, trimmed them up. We had several study sessions like this. So it really was a community effort. So if people think that, oh my gosh, here the board is imposing social-emotional learning on our students, this was a community collaborative effort, and I think it worked out really well. And it's just, I was going to say, I almost wish that I were still teaching at John Marshall because what you're doing is just really exciting to me and very hopeful, very hopeful. So, thank you.
And I mean what I said, when I look at the graduate profile, to me that is what is bedrock for us. This is our core, this is who we are, this is what we need to teach. I know of teachers who have the graduate profile in the middle of their whiteboard, and they literally teach around it. And, you know, another example, we had a teacher who meshed these two goals as part of that common rubric PLT, and every time he's doing a lesson, a presentation, that rubric is on, what does a skilled communicator look like? So not only is he, you know, scoring the presentation itself, but he's scoring what that skilled communicator, what those tenants are, and how are you doing with that? Great feedback for our kids.
Thank you.
And then we can move, did you have a question? I'm sorry. We can move on to our experts. Elementary example, Mark Randall from Gibbs.
Well, thank you, expert, I like that. So at Gibbs, we are focused on really three pri, well, one primary goal and then two secondary goals. And the secondary, I'm going to highlight the primary goal, which is reading, but our secondary goals are socially-emotional, again, much like many of the other schools, and then staff wellness as well. That's one of our goals. So we're doing some real intentional things around that. What I wanted to highlight tonight though is our primary goal, which is extremely focused on reading, and then talking a little bit about how we can get there. So what we did when we developed this back in August, using our leadership team in a very similar structure to what Eric does when he develops his goals, we didn't do the listening sessions during the summer, but we did bring our team together to really analyze our data. And what we ended up doing is we kind of broke it down into four different questions. Where are we now? Where do we need to go? How will we get there? And how do we know we reached the goal? And really just trying to simplify this whole idea of how do we get kids to be at grade level in reading at any given point during their elementary years? And just trying to simplify that as much as possible. Reading isn't easy to teach, but I think the process that we can go by and the systems that we put in place can be simplified a lot more. And what we really then focused on for those strategies is the PLC process, so that's kind of what I'll highlight here. So what we looked at, first is where are we now? We looked at that problem of practice and some data identifiers. And we did use our MCA and our FastBridge data to really try to look at, where are those problems within our reading skills that we're looking at with all of our students in K through 5? And really what we found is that even though our MCA scores were above the state and district levels, we still had a lot of students that were not meeting proficiency. So that's that sense of urgency that we always kind of take a look at. And we had about 148 students that were not proficient in reading based on last year's about 148 students that were not proficient in reading, based on last year's scores. And then, we did our fall FastBridge assessments, and that really kind of solidified the fact that we still, that we did have, or we do have, students that are really struggling in reading right now. So, about 19% of our second through fifth grade students are not proficient in reading, and that really reinforced the MCA data that we saw last spring, when we did that assessment with FastBridge in the fall. So, then, after we looked at that data, and we started to really dig a little bit deeper into where those issues were, we started to develop, well, where do we need to go? So, we did assessments this fall in kindergarten, it was the Hagerdy data, early reading data in first grade, and then second through fifth grade did FastBridge data. And that's how we developed our measurable goals to really kind of look at, then, where are we at now, and where do we need to go? And so, if you see, I won't read all of them in detail, but our kindergarten data, we want to improve the Hagerdy early reading skills from 44% secured to 90%, which would put us at about, close to eight or nine students that would not be at proficiency by the end of kindergarten. Now, we hope that we get 100%, but we also want to build a measurable and realistic goal that will really help us focus in on our students and trying to get us to that 90% level. In first grade, we focused more on that early reading data, and improving that from 41% to a predicted growth score of 78%, almost 79%. And FastBridge really helps us gather that data and look at predicted growth. So, it's a growth model score that we looked at, and it was very similar with our second through fifth grade data as well. So, we'll improve that reading FastBridge proficiency from an average of 498 to a predicted growth score of 513, as measured in the spring. Now, what's really nice about both our first grade data, well, actually, all of our data that we're looking at, we're going to also do a little bit of a dipstick in the winter, and so, we'll do that in January, probably a little bit later in January, to kind of see where we're at with that data. So, we'll go back and reassess all, well, most if not all of our students to see where we're at. The nice thing about what we're doing with our reading goal is, we're building in the theory of action, so how are we going to get there? So, we're not going to just do an assessment in January and say, oh, my gosh, we're really far behind. We're also developing formative assessments, so that we can get real-time data to understand where our students are at right now, so that we can make adjustments to our core instruction, and then we can also address the needs of students as we're seeing students that are sliding a little bit, like right now. And so, that's really building in that formative assessment data, but also, before we do that, we have to identify five to eight critical understandings or skills that we feel like every student absolutely has to master by the end of grade level. So, all of our grade-level teams, our PLC teams, have met, they've analyzed data, and they've looked at five, and have identified five to eight critical skills that every student has to have in kindergarten, first grade, second, third, fourth, and fifth grade. Then, what they did is, they developed formative assessments to determine, and then determine proficiency based on those critical understandings, so that we can get that data in real time. And then, we can address that right away, instead of waiting until more of that summative data comes in. So, using their common formative assessments, they're bringing this data to their PLC meetings, and then they're determining which students need more support during tier one and tier two intervention time. So, you've heard of RTI, response to intervention, that's really kind of that tier two, tier three time. So, we're building that into our schedule, so that we can address that and make sure that every student is getting specific and intentional interventions during that time based off of real-time data. Then, the other part that we're doing, if we provide tier one and tier two interventions based on formative assessment data, then students will increase reading proficiency, if it's done right. So, we're really looking at best practices in the PLC and RTI model, to make sure that we're doing it the right way, and that we're really kind of following that template of best practices in PLC and RTI processes. We're also looking at, and we haven't done as much of this yet, but we'll start looking a little bit more at high-leverage practices in reading, using John Hattie and the research that he's done worldwide, and provide some professional development in those areas, because we know that that can also, and will also, increase reading proficiency. Now, that's in addition to all of the reading work that we've done with the really great reading program and the Hagerdy data, and all of the science behind reading, especially in K1 and 2. And so, in addition to all that work that kind of Brenda and others have brought to the table, we're also implementing these best practices as well. So, how will we get there? That's kind of that third question. This is really our work plan, there's a little bit more to it than this, I condensed it a little bit, but you can see, you know, starting on August 26, we started that process, and we'll continue that throughout the school year. So, that's really looking at those best practices in PLC and RTI. We have had somebody from a nationally-known organization that does staff development called Solution Tree come in and do some training with my leadership team, because they're really the ones that are leading those PLC meetings, and they're really kind of the caretakers of all the data and the process that we're going through to lead this. And then, a trainer also came in during our last staff development day in November, and did some additional training with all staff to reinforce the work and to continue the work that we've been doing to start this school year. I also have a core team, and I have them listed actually on there, and you'll see core team in there, but it's my instructional coach, my reading teacher, my assistant principal, Kim Howard, and then our instructional special education coach, and they're really the leaders of all of this and the supporters of this for each of the PLC teams that we have in our building. And we meet weekly to look at our goals, to make sure that we're following through with what we said that we would do. Because goals oftentimes can just kind of sit on a shelf, collect a little bit of dust, and then you look at the end of the year, and you're like, whoa, jeez, I wonder how we did? And so, we meet weekly to make sure that we're following through with what we said that we're going to do. So, what you see on here, so far, based on the dates, is our things that we've done so far. And then, we'll continue to support this process throughout the year and provide professional development for our staff as we move along in this process. So, the last part of it is, how will we know that we made it? Well, we're going to use data to really drive that home. The data that you see on, I think it's your, yep, on the left there, is data, that formative data. So, our PLC teams are looking at this data on a weekly basis when they meet, to really determine which students need extra help and support. I took, this is actually real live data that you see there, I took the names off of there because of data privacy rules and regulations that we need to follow, but you can see that we have it highlighted in green, yellow, and red, so that teachers can look at that formative data and look in real time to see which students need extra support. Or, they might decide, because there's a large group of students that didn't get that critical understanding, where the teachers may need to reteach and reexamine the way that they taught it at that core instruction level, to make sure that all students are getting it. And I'm trying to really get our staff to understand that it's okay if you failed, because failure's feedback, and failure is okay. And it's, I think in education, we've kind of shied away from that a little bit, because there's a feeling that people are looking over their shoulder, and we're trying to get away from that, so that they can really analyze their instructional practices, so that they can look at, oh, my colleague next door maybe did a little bit better job based on that data, what did you do that was different than what I did, so that I can improve the next time I teach that, or if I reteach it? The data that you see on the right is the summative data that I mentioned before, and that's largely the FastBridge data, and then the Hagerdy data that we'll look at. We've already done the, kind of the initial assessment in the fall here, we'll do another one in the winter, like I mentioned, and then we'll do one at the end of the school year. That's what I call that, big data, so that we can analyze how we did and make instructional changes as we move forward, and to look at our curriculum, too, because maybe we're not hitting on the exact critical understandings that we set out at the beginning of the year, so as we look into the following school years, we can make those adaptations and do what's best for kids. So, in a nutshell, that's really what we're doing at Gibbs, as it relates to our primary goal in reading. Any questions?
Dr. Garcia, then Mr. Barlow.
Yes, I just have a question about how, like, bi- or multilingual learners are assessed in this process. So, if a child comes in and speaks primarily, or reads primarily, in a language other than English, are they given something in which it's normed on their linguistic and reading population, or is this all language, or English-language proficiency in reading?
Yeah, it's primarily English-language proficiency, but we also use other data points. So, we'll use data points with our English-language exams that we do, and then we lean pretty heavily on our Yale teacher as well. So, he has a large voice in kind of helping us formulate a plan for students that may be struggling, trying to learn a new language in that process.
So, does that show up in, like, summative data for a student in the information that you just showed us, or is that just sort of like process notes, or like anecdotal data that you have, like, as an asterisk next to their score?
Yeah, it'd be more anecdotal. It'd be more along those lines that we would use, that information.
Thank you.
Yes. One of my granddaughters spent her, all of her elementary life at Gibbs, so she's a penguin for life. And Gibbs is one of our larger elementary schools, and I think, is this your first year as principal there, or second?
Second year, yeah.
Second, yep, okay. And I like how you're incorporating, or you're using that predictive growth tool, I think that's so important, because it allows not only the student, but the teacher. And this leads me to the question of involvement of the home, you know, how is the information shared out, how are parents brought along in terms of this process to complement what's happening in the school? And then, the final comment that I'll make, as you consider that, is I also like the fact that you're recognizing the importance of providing tier one support. Oftentimes, we're just mining down to two, three, but I think it's important also to acknowledge that even though one may be doing well, they can actually do better, if given the support they may be missing out on, so.
Yeah, so, as far as the family, you know, involvement and things, and the process that we're going through right now really complements our new report card, and the data that, and the information that we're sharing with parents. So, as we look at the report card and the, kind of the standards-based process for that, and the data that we used during this PLC process, and some of the information that I showed you, complements that. So, during conferences, and when we report out back to parents, where their student is at, this process complements really what we're doing. So, it really works well with that. So, that has been, I think, pretty important in the development of this kind of reboot of our PLC and RTI process, in doing that. And then, you know, just to kind of reiterate with that core instruction, I mean, that, I think Brenda mentioned it, too, is where we do get our best bang for our buck, is in that core instruction, because if we're automatically going to tier two or tier three, and we have too many kids in those two areas, then we've got a huge problem. And I do remind my teachers of that, because in full disclosure, I've been doing kind of this process for about 19 years as an administrator, my second year being at Gibbs, so I think I've kind of learned from some of my own failures in kind of implementing this process. So, I think it's important for teachers and our staff to understand that, if we do have too many students that are in that tier two or three, then we've got some problems in tier one, and we have to acknowledge that. And again, not looking over people's shoulders, but to acknowledge it and to solve the problem. Because it's, there's too much at stake, and when Eric gets these kids coming, you know, into high school, and they can't read at grade level, then their job is even that much more difficult, and the results of what we do are very important as students move through our system, and more importantly, as we try to accomplish what's in that graduate profile.
Ms. Nathan.
Well, Brenda, you alluded at the beginning to bringing this out from the archaeological depths, but I think we all remember that we used to have a time where each school came and presented a presentation, sometimes based on site plan, sometimes based on goals for the year, but hearing this tonight, I'm really glad that we're back to this, and I appreciate that you brought the building leaders, because I don't think the board, but especially the community, gets to see the intentionality and the depth, and the work, and the personal commitment that it takes to look at one student with that level of detail, and determine what that one student needs to succeed, much less all of the students in your building. And I think this is a great way to show that. I'm wondering, from a macro level, when you look across all the site plans, and you see the patterns, and you see some of the best practices or the successes, how does the cabinet superintendent roll up some of those ideas into thinking about the kinds of resource allocations that we need to make, or the kinds of budgets that we need to think about for the next school year, either to support more of what individual buildings are finding or working at their building, to take to other buildings, or to grow whatever individual buildings want to do to be even more successful?
I can take a stab at that. I think when we see promising practices, like Eric has two teachers who are co-teaching, and it's, is it a EL teacher and, tell me, biology teacher? And it's a very promising practice, what they're doing and the results they're getting. It isn't just like, hey, we really like it, the kids like it, their data is showing that it's a good practice, and so, we're trying to shine a light on that. We had them present a session during back-to-school week, and when, I know, when our coaches are out, you know, we'll share that kind of information with coaches. So, we do try to shine lights on those promising practices that are working actually with our teachers, with our kids. Now, does that roll up into how we're funded? I'd have to say probably not, but that's a great question.
Can I just add that? I'm just so pleased at the level of collaboration of our principals, and they've taken a lot of that on themselves to make sure that they're sharing what's working for them. Back when I was a principal, we were really kind of working in silos, and we did not, we didn't do a lot of sharing across buildings of what was working, it just didn't happen. I don't know if it's the technology now, or I really think that through the pandemic, we leaned on each other a lot more. And I can tell you that the high school principals, the middle school principals, and the elementary principals meet, well, high school is weekly, and that is part of their discussion, is what's working in their building. So, maybe three years ago, four years ago, JM could be doing Rocket Hour, and Mayo and Century might not have paid attention to that, but they're learning from each other and growing that way, and implementing practices at work. And it's helpful for us to know, Carla, to know what's in their plans, so that when we have individual conversations, and they're highlighting something, we can say, oh, wait, I know another building that's doing something similar, and we connect them. So, it's, the collaboration is really important.
Ms. McLaughlin.
I just had a quick comment, or I guess maybe a question, that I think this, your overview was excellent, but I really think that the practitioner's view was, gives us so much more insight, particularly as a new board member, as to what is actually happening in the buildings without, you know, going there every day and observing. Can we add your presentations to board docs, so that we have not only the overview, but the specifics? I think that'd be not only helpful for board members in the community, but also for parents to see what, you know, kind of talking about what Director Nathan was talking about, you know, that parents and teachers in the community can see this wonderful work, and broaden it, and, you know, they may have ideas, but I think it just recognizes what the great work at the schools is.
I'll share those with Michelle, and thank you for highlighting that, because now principals know that we're not lying when we say the board really loves to hear from practitioners, and it's not just to get them to come here.
Yes.
But we really do think that it's, the most important work is happening there, and we're just so proud of what everybody is doing. These are two amazing practitioners. There's 26 other plans out there, we chose two people who never say no. And we appreciate them so much for their hard work and for coming tonight to share these plans with you.
One more question.
I was just thinking about the levels and the nature and the structure of these plans, and I couldn't help but think about our strategic action planning process. I feel like what you're doing in the schools at a micro level for a year are really what we're asking our work groups to do at a macro level for a three-year period. So, I'm wondering if maybe an example of some of these planning documents might also be helpful to some of our work groups, to see how you go from determining a priority using the data, down to a goal, down to a strategy, down to an action. It might be a good model.
It might be a good model.
I'll decide, I think it is, this issue is an explicit charge of our Improvement Systems Working Group, trying to look at actually how we get better at getting better. And so I think it cuts across all of the groups. But in particular, that group has got this issue. And I think we'll come out of that process by June with some pretty exciting ideas about how we can build on this kind of improvement-oriented thinking and even further structure sort of networks for improvement across the district. So yes, absolutely. Director Barlow and I were just talking earlier about how in the end, all of this has to inform the development of this strategic plan that is on, much on all of our minds, so that the whole becomes more than the sum of its parts. And these aren't just two really great examples of two schools and practices within those schools. But it really does become a self-reinforcing circle of people sharing what's working. And I love the emphasis on learning from failure. As my colleagues can attest, I fail all the time and try and learn from it. And I'm glad you're celebrating and welcoming that. Because you're right, especially as the accountability pendulum, and I'm a believer in accountability, but it swung, swung way too far for 20 years. And what it did is it crushed a lot of innovation and it crushed experimentation and personalization because people were afraid to take chances and try things and learn from it. So, and that, leaders have to embrace that to create a space for it. So thank you so much. And thanks for, district leaders for doing the same.
Thank you. And then we'll move on to, you just got applause over here. And we were all thinking about it, we just didn't all do it. 6.02, overview of staff development. Dr. Pecal.
Madam Chair and Directors of the Board, we are going to actually now turn to a related issue about how do we actually develop the capacity of our educators to continually improve instruction and understand student needs? Sometimes we say, at least if you've been at the work of education like I have for decades, you hear people say, schools never change. You know, school is like it was 100 years ago. I will tell you, in my second year of teaching in a major high school, I was Chair of the Staff Development Committee. And that's not because I was so great. It's because in the 1990s, people didn't value staff development. We basically treated teaching as an individual endeavor. Here's your classroom, here's your textbook, good luck. And suddenly, people started to look at fields like medicine, like the business world, where the notion of individual practice that was never subjected to research or sharing or process completely changed. Nobody knew what a PLC was back in that point. And staff development strategies were simply not valued. That's one thing that has changed radically and for the better. But now we see this as a really foundational element of sort of the educational enterprise. So, you know, three decades may seem long, but when you consider the history of American education, it's a complete paradigm shift in a relatively short amount of time in taking the practice of educators very seriously as something that is deserving of continuous improvement. So we are excited to give this glimpse of our ongoing work and professional development, which is deeply related to the issue of school improvement that we just heard about, so.
And before you start, just two things quickly. First of all, you know, we invite all these amazing educators to come and then, and bring your own chair. Next time, we'll have it set for you and water and whatever. And the other thing, Dr. Pecal, I'd like you to know, I was also Chair of Staff Development, but it's because at the time I was, staff development really was respected.
Oh. Well, all right.
Here's that, just putting it out there. Welcome.
Well, we do take staff development very seriously and so seriously that we have quite another dream team assembled here tonight. So it's the work of many people. So I'll probably let you introduce yourselves when you share your bit on this. I just wanted to say that, you know, while we are pleased with the work that we're doing in staff development, we don't think that we've arrived, but we didn't even get to where we are just by luck. We've done a bit of research on effective staff development. And this particular list, if you just do a Google search on effective staff development, these four will certainly be in there. And as I look on their job embedded, relevant, you know, that kind of looks like our graduate profile. So we are looking for the same kinds of qualities in our teachers as we are of our students. And this particular list comes from the Policy, the Learning Policy Institute. So there is a little method to our madness. We've done some research on what we think our teachers need and what we can do to support them.
And I think this is the year of really needing to support our staff. All years are that way, but I think this year in particular. And so we really have focused on job embedded staff development. So what are the things that can happen in the classroom practically to support teachers? And so one of the big strategies that I'm really proud of is our instructional coaching. That's a huge focus of staff development. And a couple of pieces around that, just a focus on reflection and then co-planning, being able to plan with someone else, thinking about how do I get the best results for students? And then some instructional goal setting. And then we also have special area mentors. And so those mentors are provided for teachers in areas like physical education, music, art, and our related services areas, and they spend 12 hours together. So really, the focus is reflection and thinking about how do we best meet our student needs?
One thing that we know is really important to our teachers is personalized professional development. And we just wanted to show you a little bit about what we did during back-to-school week. And we could not have done this without Laura Willis. She developed for us a back-to-school week website and where teachers could choose from, I don't know if you can advance, Heather, or see the next, all of the different, if you click on that AM Virtual Learning Network, and you might not be able to do that there.
Sure can.
And then scroll down a little bit more, maybe even more. Now, here we go. The, so teachers could choose to be part of these virtual learning networks. And they participated with others that had that same interest. And, you know, we chose these areas based on district goals and what we knew site goals would be, district initiatives. So we really went out on a limb there. They were facilitated by mostly building and district leaders. And to be honest, doing this this way, we started talking about this probably in April. And we meet with a whole big group of people. And we kind of started talking about, you know, we could have people sign up. And then they, you know, they get a link and they go in a room, and then they go in a room, and then they, they have breakout rooms in the rooms. And I'm going, oh, oh geez, I don't think we can do it. I must have said 100 times, I don't think we can do it. I don't, but Peter and Heather and everybody just kept building me up. No, Brenda, we can do it. And then we got Laura on board. And we feel really proud of that. And we did do, well, I can go into, if you just, Heather, go back to the slides. Thank you for showing us that. And that website still is live, I think. So if you wanted to go on there, you sure can. But, so people got together for about two and a half, three hours in these virtual learning networks. And then they, they had a, things that they could read, things that they could listen to, or things that they could watch. So practitioners got to choose which virtual learning network they went to. And then in that, they got to choose, do I want to read something? Do I want to listen to something, watch something? And then they came back together. And then they talked about highlights and they did goals for the year. Like, so what can we do based on this information? And we just had a lot of people working behind the scenes to make that happen. And, oh, here's a pamphlet of some of the goals and resources. So Laura had this all set up, that before they left that virtual learning network, they wrote about what their goals were for the year, like what they said that they were going to do. We had this all set, that the virtual learning networks would meet during that back-to-school week and then on February 21st. And so we were a little sad about letting that go, letting that time go. But we really believe in the new direction for that day, being a well-being day. So I'm not sure how, we don't have a plan yet for how we'll get those together. And I'm not sure honestly how feasible that will be with our schedule. But there's always next year, we could bring that group back together. So we always do a survey of our staff after major staff development events. And to have 95.7% of our teachers say that they agreed or strongly disagreed, 95.7, we're going to put that in the W column, that's a win. So personalized professional development is something that we've really been working toward. We try to have on that website as much asynchronous learning. And people still have access to that. If they say, oh, during back-to-school week, there was a session on, you know, restorative practices, and I missed that, they can go back and watch it.
Ongoing.
Good evening, I'm Peter Dodd, Elementary Curriculum and Instruction. So yeah, that third piece the research talks about is professional development being ongoing, right? Not one and done, but really sustained over time. I think when you, we had our Gibbs Principal and our JM Principal up, clearly they have a sustained focus throughout the year that's ongoing. There's power in that. So one thing that we're really proud of in terms of professional development is our new teacher support plan for our new teachers at RPS. And with the help of the New Teacher Center Induction Program, they kind of helped revitalize and reset up, how do we onboard our new people in our system? So it's a very structured year one. You have, you connect with your instructional coach in your building. You do peer observations. We have four new teacher nights throughout the school year that all of our new teachers attend. So there's a lot of support. And we don't want to just hand the keys over, walk into the room, and there you go. So we're pretty proud of that piece as well.
And then another focus is collaboration. So we have our staff development chairs here. And they're going to talk a bit about how they plan customized staff development for their sites. We'll talk through maybe the other pieces, and then we'll turn it over to our staff development chairs to speak. Some other teacher leadership roles that we have are the equity teacher leaders. So they meet once a month for two hours. And then they go back and plan equity-focused professional development for their sites. So last year was the first year with that group. This is our second year with that group. And then we also have tech novators, who are teachers who have specific knowledge in the area of technology integration. And Laura leads that group and does quite a bit of work with them out at their sites. They are teachers that are teaching full-time, but they're folks who have more specialized knowledge and then can share those tools and skills.
And then the other piece is that during our professional development at the beginning of the year, during the back-to-school week, there's also choice PD sessions. And we had probably 20 to 30 different sessions. The majority of those sessions were teacher-led, with teacher leaders, which was fantastic. We had community partners and community experts also do a number of sessions. And then we even had a group of students do some professional development sessions for our teachers, which was incredible. So having lots of opportunity and choice to support one another. And then, if I don't mind, I'm going to turn it over, this is Danielle.
Hi, I'm Danielle Olson, and I am Staff Development Chair at Sunset Terrace. And so I thank you for the opportunity for coming tonight and share a little bit about what a Staff Development Chair role entails. As staff development, my role helps support both district site and individualized professional development needs. So from a district level, I attend the District Staff Development Committee meetings. And through those, we're, have the opportunity to provide voice and input into staff development that we feel might be beneficial for staff to support district initiatives. We also have the opportunity to hear from other sites on what their site-specific staff development is, as well as we learn kind of the budgetary, monetary things that go along with that role. And then also gather input as far as supporting our staff with relicensure. For Sunset Terrace, I focus mostly kind of in three areas to support our staff development. And the first is through the August Data Retreat that was mentioned earlier tonight. That is where our building really sits down and plans out our site goals for the year. But while we're doing that, we're also considering what are, would be the relevant professional development for staff to help support them to best meet the needs of our students. And then we kind of work out a budget for that. And then we start with that kind of basic plan to begin with. But then we survey our staff as the year goes on to see, is this best meeting their needs to help support those site goals? And so they provide that feedback, and then we make adjustments as needed from there. I also work with our leadership team for the site planned District Staff Development Days. And we, again, often survey our staff to find out what is most critical for their learning at that time. And last year, this was incredibly valuable because everybody had a different learning need, it seems like. And so we provided lots of synchronous and asynchronous options for our staff, as well as lots of choices. And our staff really value choice in their PD. So we try to offer as many opportunities as we can for that, as well as they also look to help meet their relicensure needs when things like that come up. And so the last way that I usually support our staff is just through basic job requirement instructional things that they need. So they might want to attend a workshop. And so I just help them, you know, process the forms and get them registered and things like that. When I think about the qualities that effective staff development has that have been mentioned here tonight, I think that I'm most excited about the staff development that has been ongoing for quite a few years at Sunset Terrace. It used to be called Envoy, now it's referred to as the Catalyst Approach. But I feel like that professional development that we've provided has been for both licensed and unlicensed staff. And it really follows a lot of the hallmarks of that quality PD, where it starts with an initial training. But then there is job embedded, ongoing coaching throughout the year where staff can have a catalyst trainer. Or we also have site-trained coaches who can support that. Where we'll go in, we'll do an observation, and then we can provide that personalized feedback afterwards for them. And this approach just really has helped kind of build a sense of calmness, a common language amongst our building. And I think we really see one of the greatest benefits is the increase in leadership skills and just productivity independence of our students because of that. I know that just the other week, I was able to go into a kindergarten classroom. The sub wasn't going to be there till later. And I was asked if I could cover first thing in the morning. Yeah, sure, not a problem. I honestly don't know if I needed to be there. I went in and these kids were getting their breakfast. They were having conversations with each other. Some were reading. They were doing whatever they needed. And none of them needed to tell me what to do because such solid routines and clear communication from the teacher had set these kids up for just exceptional independence. And they just really had a sense of, you know, community amongst themselves because of that. And so I think when we can provide a, you know, some type of professional development where, you know, gives that positive school culture for all staff and students, I think that that's just something I get really excited about and I'm thankful for. So thank you for the opportunity to share a little bit about that tonight.
And then we have a secondary team from Kellab Middle School, Teresa Fox and Carrie Sparks, who have been working on staff development, planning staff development for many years.
Hi. So we're going to reiterate a little bit of what was already said. But the beauty of staff development is it's tailored to the building. It's not, you know, sometimes our district staff development is very general. But as Building Staff Development Chairs, we really try to tailor it to the building and try to figure out what our staff needs as a whole staff and also individuals as well. And so as was mentioned before, we start helping with the site plan. So as co-chairs, we are members of our site team. We go to the Data Retreat in August. And we try to, we try to align our staff development with our site goals. And so we have kind of two things we try to, really try to do. We try to get something, we try to have professional development for everybody. In the past, like 10 years ago, a lot of times staff development was for people who just asked for it, and then they got to spend the money. But we really try to find ways to get professional development for everybody. But we really try to find ways to get professional development for everyone. For example, on November 24th, that was a building plan day, we really appreciate those. And we tried to plan something that aligned with our site goals for everybody. And then, but we also try to provide funding for individuals who might want to attend a conference, might want to collaborate, do some other things. So there's a wide range of activities people can do for staff development.
One of the things this year that's been a little bit of a challenge is we know that we're short of subs. So, we've really pushed a lot of collaboration time for teachers in our building, whether it's a grade-level department to take a day where they can work together, planning, common assessments, things like that. We've got some curriculum changing in middle school and they've needed some time with that. Or we have a lot of co-teaching that happens in Kellogg, either with special ed in our core teachers or EL in our core teachers. This year, we just haven't been able to encourage or approve a lot of that because getting subs is so difficult when there's already people out for other reasons, which is one of the things that really makes us appreciate these four days that we're getting, starting next week without students, but with staff in the building, so that we can build in that collaboration time. And so people will still be able to do that. Because a lot of times our co-teachers don't have the same planning time on a daily basis. So this will really give them time to sit down together to talk about where they're going in their classes, how the students are doing, and who they need to touch base with and maybe deal a little bit more. So we're really looking forward to that time.
I don't know, Laura, if you wanted to say anything specific about technology, you have done so much in the last year in this position. I don't want to just put you on the spot. Maybe you'll talk about challenges and we don't want to end there. End with a highlight of all that Laura has done to help our teachers with technology. So, we do have challenges in doing this work, and one thing is progress monitoring. Like, we put so much time and effort and people time into those virtual learning networks. But if you said, "Oh Brenda, did that have an impact on teachers' practice?" I don't know. We don't have a progress monitoring system or tool in place to know that the things that we're doing are making a difference. So that's always something we're looking at. And then, like what Carrie said, time during the day for staff development. Not only when I was a teacher, but when I was a principal, I mean, CNI, you know, we'd pull this team during the day and we'd do this for the day, and we'd, we don't ever do that, like, ever. We just can't. We know that buildings are struggling so much to fill for the absences they already have. So, I don't know if we're going to be on to something with these additional days. I know from a CNI lens, we wouldn't want to take up all of the days, but we might want to take up a little bit because we can just never pull people together like we used to even three, four years ago. Laura, any thing you'd like to share about technology?
I think I'm going to just share a little bit about that virtual learning network and how, as you said, this, it wouldn't have been possible without dozens and dozens of staff facilitating and they curated the resources so that we could provide a personalized opportunity. And just lifting the voices of educators and giving them the opportunity to collaborate and learn from each other, it's been very beneficial. And many staff have reached out to ask, "Where is that virtual learning network and how can I go back and refer to what we have done?" So providing an asynchronous and synchronous learning opportunities that is ongoing is the wave of the future with PD, I think.
We, we hope so.
We hope so.
Any questions for me or members of this outstanding team?
Ms. McLaughlin and Ms. Workman.
I just had the burning question of the students who led the PD sessions, what did they talk about?
So, that was our, the group in Rochester, Rochester Community Initiative, group of students on, how do you make sure that you are hearing all the students in your classrooms' voices and understanding their experiences? And it's really just about their own experience in Rochester Public Schools. And they're an amazing group of wonderful, wonderful leaders. And anytime we can connect with them, we do.
Ms. Workman.
Yes. My questions and comments are all going to be pertaining to slide number three. And so I will start with the bottom of that on the special area mentors who are provided for teachers in the following areas: physical education, music, art, and special-related services. You said there was 12 hours of mentoring. Is that 12 hours of a mentor with a teacher or 12 hours total for all of these different subject areas?
They, each teacher gets 12 hours with their mentor.
Okay.
So, if I'm like a new occupational therapist, I'll get 12 hours with another occupational therapist where they can talk specifically about that role.
Okay, so this is just for new teachers?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that takes care of that one. May I continue? And then, are the mentors, do the mentors come out of part of the staffing for the instructional coaches, or is this something different? Do they volunteer their time? How does that work?
We do pay the mentors. So, instead of them coming to the 12 hours of after-school sessions, these folks who have a more specialized role, they get their 12 hours with their mentor, and then the mentors get paid $500 to mentor someone. And that kind of came from data that we had collected over the years that our teachers that are in special areas just have a harder time figuring out what that tailored staff development looks like. And sometimes when you're going to trainings, it's kind of focused on that classroom teacher, you know, from the role that you've had. And so we wanted to be sure that we were differentiating and making sure that we were meeting their needs. So, as we did that study, it's probably been four or five years ago now, that data came out very clearly and we wanted to make sure we provided that support.
I think it's, it's something that's really important and that we really can't do enough of. I mean, I realize we have limited resources all the way around, but I think this must be very helpful to those teachers who are new, new to teaching and/or new to Rochester. Does it include them as well, or just brand-new teachers?
Yes, they get some support too. And we have noticed, like, our retention rates in that group have changed since we put the mentoring piece in place, just because they do have that person who they can go to for questions and support.
Mr. Barlow, your question.
Yes, the virtual learning network, is that accessible through ClassLink, or how could we?
It's just, it's just an internal website, an internal Google site. So through the ISD 535 domain, and that could be accessed on the internal school website.
Okay. Thank you. Can we make that available to board members if they're interested?
Certainly, yes.
That'd be great. We'll do that.
Ms. Workman.
Sure. So, Brenda, you mentioned during the overview of school site improvement plans that too much of the time, you find out what works really well and maybe what doesn't work quite so well, but that's not always necessarily reflected in the budget. I know this isn't a budget conversation here right now, but I would just really like to reiterate that I think it's really, really important that we know what our priorities are moving forward. There's been, as you know, there's been a lot of discussion at the board table, lots of words about instructional coaches and their value. Have there been any surveys sent to teachers? Do you have data, feedback on that so that when it comes to budget time, we have a better idea of, you know, what you're looking at?
Yeah, we do. We've been collecting data, I would say over the last six or seven years. So we've got longitudinal data. We're also going to be looking at progress monitoring specifically this year because our goal this year is 80% of certified staff engaged in coaching cycles. And so, we're looking at how do we monitor that, and then how do we get feedback mid-year? And then, three-quarters of the way through the year so that we can adjust and support if we need to. So, we've got data from, from years past, but we'll also have fresh data. In fact, I think we're talking about it at this, this month's cohort, what those data collection tools will look like this year.
I know our administrators are always looking for lots of things to do, but one of my other concerns was, you know, is there, is there a specific evaluation for instructional coaches? Are the instructional coaches evaluated and do they get feedback about how they can become better as well? I don't know, Dr. Pecel, you might have some ideas on that. I don't need to hear them now. I think this would probably be more appropriate for a budget discussion, but I wanted to make sure they were, this was on your radar. So, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
And you don't even have to put the chairs back. We'll do it.
I just want to say, it is an honor to meet so many veteran and highly respected professional development chairs in your school. So, the field has progressed.
Ouch.
Well, yep, not me either.
Thank you. Okay, we will move along to safe and welcoming learning environment. So let's make sure that we're welcoming here. School Safety and Belonging, SRO Strategy Summary. This is a discussion item. Dr. Pecel.
Dr. Marvin and Directors of the Board, we are going to have two related but very distinct updates for you, one of which is an update on the early implementation of the Safety and Belonging strategy that I described for you recently, to address some of the challenges that we are seeing some students are having with re-acclimating to in-person learning and dealing with other issues. And as I think board members are aware, one of the things I've done this year is ask cabinet members to coordinate diverse cross-cutting teams that are addressing various issues. Carl Bakken earlier tonight gave you an overview of the team he's leading on school openings and closures. Jackie Peterson, our Executive Director of Elementary and Secondary Education, is coordinating the School Belonging and Safety Initiative that I know is much on your minds. I am then going to give a related but a very clearly distinct brief overview for the board to consider regarding the previous conversations we've had about school resource officers. These are distinct because school resource officers do not, and should not, and do not want to get involved in school discipline issues, but they're linked indirectly in some ways that I think it makes sense to connect these two updates for you. So, first, Jackie will give you a sense of how we are approaching the early work, which will certainly be ongoing for a period of time, with a particular focus on our middle schools and high schools. So Jackie, thank you.
Thank you, it's a little lonely up here.
Yeah.
I won't go into background, you just received that from Dr. Pecel. And I just want to say, this is a really exciting process to have gone, it's weird to say exciting when we're talking about discipline and behavior, but just that this started from a whiteboard work and that we are really quickly into the action phase. And I'm really pleased to be able to share an update on the components of the, of the plan that was put together. And I'm sharing responsibility with a number of my colleagues to see this through. So, this was really in response to significant disruptive behaviors and physical behaviors that we were seeing in our secondary schools following, you know, the return after, after students had experienced a long time in distance learning. So, there are seven components that I want to update you on, and I promise I'll be brief. The first, and they're in no particular order, but the first is the Perspectives Project that's being led by my colleague, Will Ruffin II, with his staff in the DEI Department. They are working with the Wilder Foundation to, they have formulated key questions for students and staff who have been involved in the process that we're talking about here, have, have needed some supports along the way. So, Wilder helped formulate those questions and the process for asking the questions so that we're not leading, asking leading questions. And those interviews with students are underway at the middle school this week with Will and the Equity Specialists conducting those interviews. And as soon as they're done with middle school students, they'll move on to staff. And then their plan is to come back together and make sure that they are asking the right questions before they move on to high school. So that's the current status of the Perspectives Project. The second strategy that we're implementing is around additional positions, additional staffing. My colleague Carl Bakken spoke individually with each of the, of the secondary schools about what they were seeing for needs in their schools along the lines of staffing. We came together, Carl and Will, I believe Will was there, there were a number of members of the team that came together to take a look at what was put forward by the buildings. And after a long discussion, it was really clear that Equity Specialists were a common request among our middle and high school buildings, which is a great tribute to the work that's being done by the existing Equity Specialists. For example, John Marshall talked about if they could just have Rodney Sharp every single day, it would make a huge, huge impact. And I think anyone would say that about Rodney Sharp, he's amazing. But Eric also recognized that asking for Rodney every day would leave John Adams, there would not be that connection with families that they share. So he unselfishly said, "Give a second Equity Specialist so that they can alternate and know the families really well." But they're really calling out that this is a resource that is helping their families and their students. So, Carl, Carl has worked on, and those positions have been posted for additional Equity Specialists. The third strategy is around enhanced case planning, and this is Carla Bolison's department, and her staff are working with buildings to take a look at individual needs of students. And I asked the secondary buildings to talk to me about how they're, how they are implementing these strategies. And I heard from one or two high schools that said this process has allowed them to identify such specific needs of students that they're able to do things like, for example, increase the number of positive interactions that they're having with, to set up strategies so that they increase the number of positive interactions that staff are having with an individual student throughout the day. So these are really, this is really fine-tuning the needs of our students in, in student support services. The fourth strategy is under discipline enforcement, and this is the, where we have worked with our secondary principals around suspension, use of suspension, and put parameters around that because it isn't the first strategy that we ever want to use. And together, we worked on a process where there would be steps that would be followed before that would be implemented, which are around talking with the student, talking with the parents, getting to root cause of the behavior. I can say that even though this is in the toolbox now, it's been rarely used. In fact, yesterday, I had a conversation with a middle school principal who wanted to talk through the strategies just to make sure. She said, "I think we might be getting close with a student where we might need to do a suspension, but I want to make sure that we have walked through all of the steps the way we discussed and, so that we're meeting the expectation." So even though it's there in the toolbox, it's not being used very widely, but it's helpful for the staff to know that it's there. We also, again, Chris Lingan is really heading this up and has conversations with staff, problem-solving conversations with our administrators, to make sure that we're doing everything we can before a suspension is, is utilized. The fifth strategy is a school-wide strategy, and this is something that I'm heading up. And that means that buildings need to be talking about the issues that are going on and involving staff in problem-solving those issues. You heard Eric Johnson talk tonight about the meetings of the minds, and that was around academics, but it can also be around behaviors. And it's really important that staff are involved because if we're having a discipline issue, it's not an administrative issue, it's everybody's issue. And where we're meeting with great success is buildings that are bringing together staff to talk about what they're seeing in their classrooms and what strategies are working. We have some examples of buildings who have done this as a whole staff to problem-solve. We have examples of buildings that have used their PLC time, additional PLC time to name the issues and talk about the strategies that are working for them. We've had examples of leadership teams doing this in buildings, so not the whole staff. We have buildings that are doing optional meetings for staff to come and exchange ideas. So there's a whole variety of ways that this happens, but the key is to involve staff. It's, it's everybody's work together. I heard from a middle school today where two teachers came up with a book that they wanted to read, and it's called "Hacking School Behavior." And they started talking about reading this book, and 30 staff members said, "I want to read it too." be in a book study." And it's proactive on their part. They recognize that they have a role in making sure that the building is safe and a great environment for kids. So, that's where it's working, when staff are getting involved and seeing their part, their role. And so, that's something that I'm overseeing. A sixth component is the PBIS software. You've heard of us talk about Swiss as a way of recording discipline data. And we've used Swiss for a long, long time. We've had a couple buildings try the PBIS application. Specifically, John Adams has found it to be invaluable for two reasons. One, it is a way for teachers to report concerns and for there to be two-way communication about that concern. So, the administrator is able to find out, "What are you doing on your end?" and communicate back what the administrative team is doing to help solve the problem. So, it closes that communication loop. The second piece it does is it provides a reward system for students, a positive reward system, and it makes it easier to track that. So, Kim McDonald is taking the lead on that. Last year, we studied it. We had really great buy-in from buildings, but we were reluctant to leave Swiss because Swiss is a little cheaper than PBIS, but we've decided it is very much worth investing in. It's not a huge expense. And now, what we're working on is, when is a natural break to introduce that application? Because we don't want to just start like right now, suddenly we're not using Swiss. We need to use, we need to go at a natural break time where we can migrate to the new system. But some of the principals are talking about, maybe we could start with that positive incentive piece of the software to get used to the new program and then migrate to the keeping records. But that's something that's happening in all buildings. And then, the final one is the restorative practices planning, and that's being led by Will Ruffin and Carla Bolson. And they're in the planning stages of how we would provide training and build support around restorative practices and circles. So, that initiative is going to get off the ground soon. So, that's a brief overview of a really, I think we started out with what we were calling it the four S's, and now it's really like seven really great strategies that really are going to make a huge difference in our buildings.
As we're playing.
Could we maybe have, assuming other board members are interested, maybe having a follow-up in terms of how these strategies are taking shape and working out and what you're learning as you go along?
Sure. I would be really happy to do that. I can give, there's anecdotal how this is working.
Of course.
I've had been in four buildings this week so far and have had a chance to ask, "How are things going?"
And, you know, so not to put all the burden on you.
Yeah.
We can, we can share it.
Yes, definitely.
And I really, really appreciate it when we do have our teachers and our administrators coming and sharing. I think it's, not that it's not meaningful from you, because it is, but it's just so much more in-depth and gives me, in particular, a clearer picture to see how this is all shaking out, and it's really helpful. So...
I understand. I think they would be happy to come and share with you.
I just wanted to ask a question and make a comment too. So, I don't necessarily know that the Board specifically would need to know this because this would obviously be on a teacher level, but in the strategy somewhere, are there ways to support educators or staff who may be struggling to implement some of these things? So, like, for example, if I am an educator and I'm consistently having a problem with the same child or the same type of behavior presentation, is there a way that my supervisor or their boss is identifying me as perhaps like I need additional skills training in that area and allowing me to get that?
Yes. I think it's real, that's the real critical part of reviewing data and taking a look at trends. And if we had a student, say, that was showing behaviors during a particular hour of the day, then the first step would be to talk with that teacher to say, "Well, there have been a lot of referrals during this hour and not so much in other hours. So, let's take a look at what you're doing and what other teachers are doing that are successful," and connecting those staff members so that we can really wrap around and support the student. I think that most of our buildings or all of our buildings have kind of a student assistance team. They might call it something completely different than that, but that they're looking at data and then identifying strategies that are working. It might be something like, during this hour, the student needs a break or needs to talk to a trusted adult before the class period starts, or does really well if they can stand up in the back for a while. You know, it wasn't that long ago that we saw that as defiant behavior, but we recognize that some kids just don't sit for a whole hour, and if they're standing and getting the content. I remember being in an elementary classroom and a kid was pacing in the back of the room, pacing, pacing, pacing. And if you were watching with an untrained eye, you would think that kid was completely disconnected. And the teacher was giving directions. And as the students were released to go do their jobs, that student knew exactly what to do. And we talked to the teacher, and they said, "Yep, that's just what he needs to do, and he's getting it. I know he's getting it, and it's fine." So, some of those strategies, like, yeah, what you think of as appropriate behavior in a classroom, needs to change, right?
Right.
If we're not allowing for students to do some of the things that help them to attend.
Right. Because I think a number of us on the Board got communications from educators who are sort of like pleading for us to like go take a look at what's happening. And I think two automatic things happened for me was, one, even just reading the communication, I could tell that those particular individuals also needed assistance.
Yes.
Which is obviously not my role. And I also have the ability to look at a situation, even without seeing it, sort of lead into this like functional behavioral assessment or these other sort of social and behavioral issues that I just have like a ton of knowledge. Also, not my role to go, you know, implant that into the school, but there certainly feels like there's a theme. And so, I appreciate this work, and I appreciate sort of like the collaborative effort that it's taking on all of these different pockets of people throughout the district who are making this work, because I know even with the most seasoned of educators, and even if everybody on the Board were of a particular caliber, if everyone in the Cabinet or all the administrators are of a particular caliber, this is, these have been really difficult years. And so, I just want to validate that for everyone, parents, students, teachers in the classroom, administrators. And I'm glad that we're also doing this sort of like multi-strategy approach and sort of like an interdisciplinary approach to managing this. So, thank you for the update.
Dr. Pecal.
Dr. Garcia, I really appreciate the question. In addition to what Jackie said, I want to highlight a really important thing. We are on the cusp of a significant new investment in the Equity Specialist position, which, as Jackie described, has grown out of this work. And the role of those specialists is not just direct work with kids. And this is going to be super important, and I know Will is very focused on this. It is also building the capacity of staff and naming issues in schools that may be promoting these behaviors.
Perfect.
So, there's a tension because the people that we have and the people we're going to hire are so good with kids. We could spend all of their time directly working with kids, but they also have a building staff capacity role that's explicit and it's baked in. And sometimes, the issues that they and we need to surface are challenging issues. And that's okay. You know, we need to address them. So, I'm really excited about this. The other piece, just to be really clear, the Perspectives Project that is also coming out of our Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion is going to generate, I am confident, a lot of insights that we need to build back into the kind of support you're talking about. Because that's both, because we're not just talking, I kind of had the idea of, "Let's talk to kids who are impacted by the discipline process." And Will said, and Jackie and others agreed, "Yes, but let's talk to staff too." And so, we're going to get both of those perspectives. And it's incumbent upon us to take that feedback that we're going to get, that we're already getting, like literally right now, and bake it into the kind of support that you're describing, both for students and staff, so that there's a feedback loop between, you know, what we're hearing from the youth perspective. I would say too, to Director Workman's point, I would also love to have some students come to the Board and talk about these issues in addition to site-level staff as well. So, I think as we get a little further into this, we definitely would welcome the chance to bring this discussion back to the Board.
Thank you so much, Jackie.
Thank you, Jackie.
And Dr. Pecal.
So, one of the privileges of my job is I get to be involved in designing efforts like that, which I was very involved in. And then, I get to hand them off to talented people like Jackie to implement, and I can kind of go into support mode. So, what I want to do now briefly is share an idea with the Board to address the issues that we've discussed most at length in a study session a number of months ago. But you also all wrote very thoughtful written comments, which our Chair accurately summarized, carefully summarized, carefully and accurately. And this is not an item for action, at least in my recommendation. In our new board structure that we're going to begin implementing soon, this would be in our prep-for-action category. So, my assumption is that at another meeting, maybe next week, the Board might choose to take some action on this, or maybe it's not a fit. I sent you a short summary, but as I thought about the issue of school resource officers in our schools, which of course is a complex issue, not just in Rochester, but around the country, it seemed to me that there were a few pieces that ran through your feedback. One, wanting to really know how it's working now in Rochester Public Schools. Two, wanting to know how, what we know from research and evidence about the impact of SROs and alternatives to them, and what happens when you inhabit alternatives. And then, three, a really carefully designed process to integrate what we learned from what's happened in Rochester and what we know from research and practice into a co-design, authentic, carefully facilitated co-design process. So, the proposal that I mapped out for your consideration really would have three components, and we'd be working with three talented external facilitators. I don't think external facilitators are always needed, but I think in an issue like this, skilled people who don't work for us, don't work for Rochester Police Department, can be very, very valuable. And so, the first phase would be to work with somebody who here is local. Many of you may know, Tuwanda Burks. She works at Mayo during the day, but has a consulting business on the side, is a very skilled facilitator. And that she would facilitate for us a working group to just focus on the implementation of the memorandum of understanding that we already have in place. So, that group is not charged with any of the alternative thinking. It's really, how well are we implementing the MOU, which has a lot of very progressive things in it, at least compared to how the SROs have functioned historically in many schools. So, that would be a working group that we would convene, you know, shortly after the Board might, if you decide that this is a direction you want to take. With the holidays almost upon us, I was thinking January, a lot of work is already happening on the MOU, but this would be a small group, very focused on the MOU, that could, of course, not only generate ideas for improvement, but report back to the Board on the lessons learned, what we've learned, very internally focused, how's it working in Rochester. Second is, we'd work with a very talented PhD student, Monique Davis, who's getting her PhD in Applied Economics at the University of Minnesota, Twin Cities, whose research is going to focus on these, you know, issues of systems that can replicate inequality. And school discipline and SROs is one of the features of her own research. And as part of a small contract with us, what Monique would do, and frankly, she has to do this for her own PhD work, is that she would both summarize the research on school resource officers, of which there's a good amount, but also the research and do some interviews with school districts that have adopted an alternative to SROs. So, we would have Monique synthesizing for us sort of the state of knowledge. And then, we'd work with somebody who some of you may know, but I've just met, Jess Roberts, who's based in the Twin Cities. But he's facilitated the co-design process that the City of Rochester has used around increasing the pathways for women of color to the construction industry. And he has this very interesting developed co-design process. And to summarize it briefly, and Jess sent me a graphic I can share with the Board if you're interested. It's a process, the purpose of which is to bring together, you know, systems that often have, you know, influence and authority, and people that are impacted by those systems in a very co-creation, co-design model. It includes a design team, and I'm just going to share this with you briefly, that are a collection of co-designers that self-identify across a diversity of communities, values, cultures, and lived experiences, especially those most difficult to reach in more traditional research and engagement efforts. Co-designers draw on their trusted and intimate relationships with stakeholders to offer deep insights and perspectives that would otherwise be inaccessible. So, that's the team. And the team basically does two things. They have what's called studios and sprints. Studios are space times, spaces and times for co-designers to come together and collectively interpret information, co-develop and test promising solution concepts, and work with decision-makers and community leaders to translate stakeholder-informed vision into action. Studios are workshops for sharing what participants and teams have learned and co-develop an approach for what he calls "Design Sprints," which are where practitioners and teams explore more deeply the questions, ideas, and community input that arise during the design studios. Sprints are the opportunity for co-designers to explore questions and test ideas with their trusted networks and generate insights and ideas to share at the next studio. The focus of this co-design process would not be narrowly focused on school resource officers. It would be focused on school safety and belonging. And so, school resource officers would certainly be something that the process would consider, but would be broader. The timing of this, because our SRO MOU process is very much underway, and it's too early to really, I think, draw major conclusions from that, the timing of this would be that we would run that MOU process, the MOU working group through the summer. We would engage Monique in looking at the research and doing some interviews in the spring, partly because that's the timeframe that happens to work for her as a very busy PhD student. And then, we would convene the co-design process in the late summer and fall. In addition to this, the Board has two important dates to consider, the SRO contract already on the calendar, one of which, as the Chair and Vice Chair and I were looking at our calendar in exec this week, we discovered, we, and I'm sure this is my fault, we had some dates backwards. Previously, we're going to be considering SROs in a Board meeting on February 22nd, but then had a study session on April 12th. And it makes much more sense to have a study session before consideration and a Board meeting. So, what I'm going to propose is, we keep the study session on April 12th, and the Board would consider the SRO issue on the 19th of April. So, those are two dates that I'm not proposing would change. They're still on your calendar, a study session and a Board meeting. But if you took this approach to what I think you might call a "go slow to go fast" approach to really find some level of deep clarity and consensus to this issue, we would be having those conversations in the midst of this larger process. So, there's an overview of this. I know I just said a lot. I tried to keep my summary bullet pointed that you can look at, and we can come back in a subsequent meeting, either collectively or individually, for some additional dialogue. I'll just say, as I think you all know, I feel no deep ownership of this. It's to try and bring you something tangible to react to and consider, and other approaches certainly could be as productive. I think, as I reflected on the discussions we've had about this issue since I got here, a sort of a measured, phased approach like this, that takes some time but doesn't take interminable time, could get us to a different place on this issue with some level of clarity by next year. And obviously, other partners beyond the school district would be involved in this, certainly Rochester Police, among others. But I wanted to bring it to you first because the Board's either agreement to this process or another approach, I think, is really critical. You have to believe in the process through which we're going to get it, look at these issues, kind of frankly, before we get into the issues. So, Madam Chair, that is my overview.
Good overview. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions, concerns? Dr. Garcia.
Yeah. So, the, I appreciate you sending out the summary because it's clear to me from this that you not only heard us, but you understood what we were asking for. The timeline is the, for me, the crunch piece, because I was hoping that the information that's listed like in Strategy 2, we would have by the time we would be making this decision. So, I, it feels to me like the summary, if we were to, you know, adopt it in full, is assuming that we're going to do it again for another year and then figure out after that year what we're going to do with the SROs. Is that accurate?
Madam Chair, I didn't want to presuppose your decision. I think you could still choose to make a different decision, but yes, this process would extend beyond the spring timeframe. The logic of that was kind of twofold. One, you know, I happen to have connected with Monique because her doctoral advisor wants to work with us on actually how literacy influences discipline issues, which is something we might bring to you in a research proposal, but that's how I met her. I think she could be great. We would also support a young scholar of color in her future look in this issue. So, I think we'd get something. She can't do it before late spring. The second issue is that this timeline allows both what we learn from the research and what we learn from our MOU implementation to be inputs to the co-design process. So, that doesn't meet the spring timeline, but we could move the co-design process up and do it earlier in the summer as opposed to the fall. The logic of that was getting student participation when...
The logic of that was getting student participation when it's, when the school's not in session, and so the idea was to convene it in the early months of the next school year. But yes, you're right, but I, it does potentially influence the decision you might make about next year in a way that you should all give some thought to, for sure.
Ms. McLaughlin.
And I guess I just want to be more specific on that, that I think that current MOU and contract expire May 1st, or roll over if we choose not to take any separate action. When we talk about spring, we're talking about May 1st as a specific date deadline. I guess the question I have for the board is, would we want to entertain another version of the MOU for the fall, for the next year? You know, perhaps some ideas about improvement that could be implemented for the 2022 year that could get us, you know, further down the path that we want to be.
Well, and Karen, I think that's, you know, a very realistic type of thing, because after we find out how the MOU is working, what's being implemented, what's not, if we decided to go slow to go fast, that's what, right, we could absolutely tweak the contract, you know, we decided, well, we'll do it for another year, but we're going to put into it some of the things in the MOU, change the wording in it, change the expectations, whatever. But then the decision whether or not to keep MOUs, SROs in the schools would be delayed until the year after the spring. Ms. Workman.
Yeah, the current contract and the MOU are effective from July 1st, 2021, through June 30th, 2022, and I'm not sure when the city of Rochester wants to know. I don't have that information at my fingertips. So I feel like we're in a little bit of a bind. I understand, too, if we take no action at all, then the contract is continued. But I like your idea of, we might decide we need to tweak the contract and/or the MOU, depending on the information that we learn between now and the time that we have to do it.
Ms., Nathan.
So would there be a way under the first strategy, when you have the stakeholder team looking at the MOU, to target some sort of midpoint report to us in time for that April study session, so that they know, they won't have the whole year of data, but to front-load perhaps some of their, as much as they can, so that we have what we need to talk about the 2022, 23 conversation?
Okay. I could, I'll take all of this into consideration in sort of revising this for a subsequent discussion, which obviously I'll talk with the chair and vice chair about when and, when and how to bring this back to you, but I could add, could add that.
Okay, I think we're good. You good?
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
We will move on to 8.01, a sec.
Chair Marvin.
Sorry.
Could we have just a couple minutes stretch break?
Okay, we will take a, do you mean literally a couple minutes?
That would be fine unless somebody needs a longer one.
Okay, so it's 9:26, let's recess till 9:30.
At 9:31 PM, good work. And we are going to be looking at 8.01, Policy Recommendations. This is the second reading. You've already been briefed on the policies. Any questions for the Policy Committee? Very none, we'll move on to 8.02. 8.02, oh, you can call them. 8.02, Approval of a Resolution in Support of an Underpass Walkway at Dakota Middle School. Dr. Pecel.
I am, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Board. I am not surprisingly going to call Scott Sheridan up to the podium to give you an overview of this, I think, an important resolution to an issue that I've gotten some emails about since I arrived.
Good evening.
There we are. I have a 37-page. Oh, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
So we'll move on to 8.01.
This is pretty straightforward, actually. The City of Rochester and Construction Division, we've been working with the City of Rochester. They're going to be reconstructing part of 65th Street in front of the new middle school. They're planning to do it next summer. As part of our negotiation with them, we wanted to create a pathway where, a safe pathway for walkers that live south of 65th Street, for that neighborhood that lives to the south, within the walk zone for the middle school. And we negotiated building a tunnel underneath 65th Street. The city agreed to design it, but they asked that we pay our portion of it. And they were working with MINDOT, who has to approve the project, and MINDOT's requesting us to have a resolution passed by our Board that says that we approve of the tunnel and that we have the funds necessary. So we have the funds, we just need the Board approval to have that resolution that we can show to MINDOT for them to continue on with the project.
And Ms. Workman has a question.
I do.
I know you do.
And I'm not sure who to direct it to, so Scott, I guess I'll look at you. And Dr. Pecel, what are we doing for, I guess, I'm not sure what the tunnel looks like underground, but in terms of safety for the people who are using it, will there be cameras, will there be people monitoring it when students are using it during the day? I'll throw one more at you. Will this tunnel be open all the time or just during school time?
It's for public use all the time, similar to the tunnels you see under bridges, on walk paths and trails. I'm not sure if it's going to be lighted, I can check on that and let you know. But it is only about 80 feet.
How long?
About 80 feet under the roadway, not depth, blank.
Right.
Yeah. And so it attaches up to the trail, it's already part of the easement that the city has for the north side of that division, property division, and they're just extending it, they're extending the sidewalk along the south and also running the tunnel. And as you'll notice on the drawing that it provided, it loops around and connects back up to the sidewalk that you can then take up to the bus lot. And the reason it extends around like that is because it has to be ADA accessible, and so it can only be a certain, it has a grade that goes along there to make it ADA accessible. And that's why it extends around like that.
Okay, great. Thank you, that was helpful.
Other questions? Scott, do you need an answer on this sooner rather than later?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, thank you. Good information. Moving on, 8.03, Approval of the 2021-2022 Budget Adjustments as of October 31st, 2021. This is a briefing item, Dr. Pecel.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board Members. I am pleased once again to welcome back Executive Director, Business and Finance, John Carlson, to handle this item.
It's been a while.
It actually has.
All right, so we are here for our first quarter budget revision. This is a normal process we go through, kind of after we close the books, and we want to roll in expenditures from the previous year, or funds available into the expenditure budget that were left over from last year. We also make some other changes based on grants and revenues and other things that we learned about since June 15th. I just want to note, what I'm going to be showing on the screens is very high level so that we don't spend, you know, an hour at this, but within Board Docs, there's an attachment that kind of goes finance code by finance code and another attachment that's right out of the finance system, so we really can tie back all the numbers. So I'm just going to talk high level and millions of dollars here to help summarize this. When we approved the original budget back at the beginning of June, I called for 244.5 million in revenues in the General Fund, 245.9 million of expenditures. At that time, based on our projected end-of-year fund balance, and then you add in the new revenues, subtract out the expenses, we were headed to an 8% unassigned fund balance, so well within Board policy. I've tried to make this a little bit different, I hope this is not confusing, you can give me your feedback later, but rather than flip back and forth and try to show you what's changed, I just tried to gray out what I had just talked about and then put in blue what the new numbers are, so basically what you're approving. So the beginning fund balances, of course, now are all known, and so those are shown there in the far-left column, and we had $47.5 million of fund balance left over from last year and multiple years before that, but that's the kind of running total. The new revenue budget for the General Fund would be 256.5 million, that includes, again, new federal revenues we've learned about, new grants, new donations, we've updated for student accounts, we came in a little bit higher than we thought, so that includes some extra state revenue for that, so on and so forth. The expenditure budget then is updated to 265.5 million, and you might say, geez, that's a $9 million difference, is that bad? 6 million of that 9 is basically unspent funds from the last year that we're basically rolling out and asking for approval to continue spending this year, put into the department budgets and all that, and give access to those funds going forward. So in reality, the real deficit that I would call it is about $3 million right now. If everything comes to fruition, we spend down to $38.5 million. Really, the number I like to highlight is the unassigned fund balance, because that's without all the restricted funds, but that would show us ending at 10.3%. So again, we're still on track to finish well within Board policy. The picture has slightly improved from where we were. In our other funds, we have the food service, community service, building construction, debt service, those are the original starting numbers, so I'm just going to flip forward, this is what the new numbers would look like. So again, in all of our fund balances there, we ended up basically very close, but a little bit better, minus the debt service fund there. The building construction, just want to note that, again, that's the money left over from the bond referendum and the long-term facility maintenance bonds that we've issued, and then we're rolling that all back and saying, that's all authorized to be spent. I think some of that's going to carry over into next summer or past June 30th, so I don't think it's likely that all 159 million is going to be spent to finish up the projects this school year. But we're putting it in the budget and saying, we're going to get close to that number. Just flip ahead on these other funds. So these funds are not so much in our control, per se, as the FSA Plan, the HRA Trust, custodial, which is just kind of like scholarships, and their donations in, donations out, and then the OPEB Trust, where we're saving up money for long-term costs for health care. These are our internal service funds, work comp, dental trust, health trust, and then our printing service fund. There's not a whole lot of change in these budgets, these are pretty stable and the expenses are pretty close, and the revenues are pretty close to what we've already projected. So if you put this all into context, the budget is 347.3 million in revenues, 516.8 million in expenditures. That would end slightly better than what we're projecting when you approve the original budget with $85.8 million sitting basically in reserve. So just kind of want to highlight, why do some of these budget adjustments, or why do these fund balance numbers seem like they're so large? One of the biggest unknowns we had last year was the difficulty in staffing. And at any given point, as I look back through a different kind of month, monthly reports that we kept, we had 173 unfilled positions. And so when you're not spending that money, 500,000 a month and 500,000 a month, it just starts adding up, and that money was just basically saved, it wasn't spent. The building construction, obviously, we assumed we would be just slightly further along in paying for the construction than we actually were, so there was $52 million that we didn't spend in the last year's allocation. And then we noticed in our OPEB Trust, there's a large, better-than-earnings, better-than-expected earnings in the market, and so there was $3.4 million left over or above what we thought we were going to end in that account. So what's changed since June 15th? Well, obviously, we closed the books, we have the audit, everything's done, we increased our revenue estimates based on student counts going up a little bit higher than we thought they were going to be, costs, we know now which staff we have hired, which staff we haven't hired, so we've reduced the expenditure budget a little bit for some of those open positions that have been open, because what we experienced last year is not really different from this year, we still have multiple positions open every month as we pull our numbers in. Just take a quick look at our FTEs, very similar in most of our categories, our teacher, just highlight that, we had budgeted for 1,441.9 teachers, we actually have increased that to 1,478.4, and a lot of that is due because of the online school being more successful than we thought. We had, so decided about seven positions for that and we're up to over 40 in that area. So all told, the budget now includes 2,672.69 FTE. Like I said, we still have 110 open positions, so they are in the budget. There's 56 para-jobs that were, or 56 FTE worth of para-jobs that we're showing not filled as of November 1st, 22 in student nutrition services, 16 in maintenance, and 12 in our off-schedule area. Again, I mentioned that we've created several new positions since June 15th because of primarily the demand at the RPS online school, so there are 36 new teaching positions, 12 para-positions, seven off-schedule, three administrators. Just, again, trying to show where these happened at, so 45 of those were at the RPS online school, four at Bishop, four at FSC, three at Sentry, two at Riverside, two at JM. So that's kind of a quick summary, I guess I would entertain any questions you might have on the first quarter budget adjustments.
Thank you for this, Mr. Carlson, and as you said, there's a much more detailed look at this that's available to everybody online.
Yes.
So thank you for that.
And I will just preview, for coming next week, we'll have an updated five-year forecast. Now, we take all that information from the closing, the books, the first quarter budget adjustments, we roll that into a new five-year look, and so we're inked just to share that with you next Tuesday night.
Hopefully you'll get some sleep between now and then.
Well, it's mostly done, so.
Oh, good.
Ready to share that.
Chairman Marvin, does this require approval?
That was my question.
This does require approval, it's not urgent, so like if you held off till next week, that's fine, too.
Ms. Workman, was that your question?
No.
Oh, do you have another one?
I was just going to ask, I was trying to refresh Board Docs, is your PowerPoint in Board Docs?
No, I gave it to Michelle this afternoon, or last night or sometimes, so I was hoping that she could just add that in there.
That would be great.
Soon.
Thank you.
This is very useful. Any last questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, thanks.
9.01, Annual Calendar, any updates for the Board annual calendar or items to be considered for a future agenda, Ms. Workman?
Yes, so in 2020, we ran a School Board Academy, which was for any people who are interested in running for the Board or for just community members in general. And we ran it through community education, we had two sessions scheduled, only one happened because of COVID, and if we're going to do this again, I think it should be probably in early March. I don't know if this is something that needs to have Board approval, but we would certainly need to make sure that we have reserved some space in the Edison Building to conduct such a thing. And I'm happy to work on it again, it would be great if we could have one or two other people to perhaps make some revisions in the structure that we used last time to make it a little bit more informative and comprehensive to people who are interested.
So, thank you, let's have some conversation about that, and then perhaps we could put it, if we put it, if it needed to be on the agenda, would beginning of January be soon enough?
I don't know how fast the room reservations fill, that's my only concern.
Like here?
Yes.
And publicity.
And publicity. So when would you like to see us have something to you?
If you want.
Sure.
Things like that.
Can I pick this up?
Yeah.
So if you want it in the catalog, the brochure, we need it ASAP, we're putting that together.
Like next week?
Like last week.
Just like yesterday.
But if we can do flyers and email, then no hurry.
Okay.
Does that work? Emails and flyers, or do you want it in the catalog?
I think emails and flyers.
It'll have to be emails and flyers.
Would anybody object to, just, we're not voting, object to having some kind of School Board Academy?
I would actually speak in favor of it, as someone who went through it most recently in 2020.
Okay, so in theory, we think it's a good idea, what we need to work out is...
The word "Academy," take that with a grain of salt, please.
Yeah, okay.
A whole salt shaker full of salt.
Workshop, so.
More workshop.
Theoretically, we think it's a good idea, we have to work out the details about when, where, and exactly what it's going to be.
And who.
And who.
And who. So, if we put it on, in the flyer, the community ad flyer with the date, then we'd still have time to work out the details.
It would have to happen yesterday that we'd need the dates.
If we're going through the catalog...
So are you saying it doesn't have to be in the catalog?
I don't think it does.
I don't think so.
No, all right, okay, good. We will get back to this, then.
Chairman, do we want to authorize an ad hoc committee to work on it, so that we're not working on it at the Board table and come up with some recommendations for the rest of the Board members, or how does the Board feel about that?
Well, we could certainly do that, we could do that now, or we could do that the first meeting in January.
I'd like to be able to get started on it, rather than waiting till after the holidays to do that.
So you're volunteering to be on the ad hoc committee?
So I will volunteer to be on it, since I've been through it before. If there are any other people who'd like to be, to volunteer, I...
I just have a basic concern, and it's not of a personal nature, but some of us, well, four of our current Board members are seeking, well, their terms will be up next year, and I'm not sure those four Board members, if any of the four would be, if it would be appropriate for them to be working on the, or presenting the actual School Board Academy.
Two years ago, when we did it, Deborah Seelinger and I did it, and she was up for election that year, I don't see it as a conflict at all.
Well, yeah, it's an important question, I think, so.
Yeah. And I stand by what I said, whether it occurred in the past or not, does not mean it was right, it's just something to be considered, and...
I'd be certainly happy to hand it over to the three of you, if that's what you want. I mean, seriously, it's not a problem.
It's not what I want, I think it's important for the community to know that they can trust our processes, and that, on a personal level, it doesn't matter to me personally.
No, I understand what you're saying.
But I think sometimes we may create unnecessary, expose ourselves unnecessarily to community criticism and/or ridicule.
Well, if this is acceptable, can we have this discussion in January? We could certainly have a workshop in March, I mean, have the Academy in March, but since filing isn't until June, I think if people knew about it and we could get some information out there, we could also have it in April, would still get people who are interested in running time to do it, so I think we can work on some of these details then. Does that work?
Yep.
I love it when people agree with me.
There were a couple of annual calendar points, just, like, no, super brief.
No, absolutely, that was just the one, go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, I know as our Vice Chair and Chair and I talked about making this a time in our meetings where we highlight deviations from our, changes to our annual calendar, so I'll do this briefly. We will follow up with these things and talk about them through execs, so you don't have to write all these down. I'm recommending we remove the item on the annual calendar now on February 22nd, focused on the SRO contract, to April 19th, as I mentioned earlier, following your study session on that subject. I would like to add a short update on the strategic plan survey and focus groups to your next meeting, that'd be an info and outreach item, on how we're reaching out beyond our working groups. Just an FYI, we will start using, pending your approval of our policy changes, our new agenda structure for Board meetings on the 1st of January, and we will start using our new process of preparing for Board meetings on the 18th of January. I am going to recommend, I know your schedule is action-packed and jammed, but I'm going to recommend we add a few strategically-placed additional times for you in study session on the budget, because it will be complex. And we had the recommendation earlier today, which I think is a prudent one, if you choose to adopt the approach I described earlier to the SRO process, to add an update to you from the working group, that would be in the spring, before your timeline on the contract, on what we've learned and how things have gone in implementing the MOU. So I'll put all those things into motion with Michelle, but I think the vision was that we actually, at least briefly, name these issues so you can react to them or add other ideas, but that's my list.
Can we react now? I don't want to wait to do the SRO thing, because that was exactly what happened to us last time, it was like sometime in late April or early May or something like that, and it would, like, we didn't have enough time, and it sounds like, at least for today, what people wanted to do, without completely assuming, is that we need to rework language, and if we're going to wait until the 19th to do that, but we need to make a decision in May, that may not be enough time. So can we leave it in February instead of pushing it to April?
I think we could, I think the issue is, we need, I think you need a study session before that decision session, so I think what we could do is we could look at bumping the study session earlier, and then February, February's ambitious to have had a study session and your decision session, but what if we tried to move both the study session and the Board meeting before March 1st? We accomplish both. I'm not looking at a calendar right now, but...
Yeah, I know, I would be okay with that.
The idea was you have a study session before your in-Board meeting to real, and frankly, only focused on that issue right now.
Do they have to be sequential?
The idea was the study session before the Board meeting, kind of like what we've done, it just happens.
And maybe I misunderstood, I thought you were saying the 22nd is when we would have had that study session, and you want to move it instead until April 19th?
Study session, no, study session's the 12th of April, and...
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
It was awkwardly placed, and I think just unthinkingly placed after the Board meeting.
Okay.
So what I was trying to do was flip the order. But I take your point, that this is pushing it a little too late, so let us, let's take a look at that. We can, I hear what you're saying, that if we push it all the way until April 12th, that's too far in the spring, so we'll still try and go study session, Board meeting, but move them both earlier?
Okay.
I'm not sure what I'm looking at, but I see a February 15th study session that says School Resource Officer Contract Review, and then...
I think that's the one I assumed you were trying to...
February 22nd, Action School Resource Officer Contract, so it's already scheduled for February? Or am I misunderstanding something?
I think that's maybe what I thought you were doing, is moving from the February date to, all the way back to April.
I got lost at some point, so...
We're going to have to look at that, the one you're looking, because I'm working from the annual calendar, that's been the one we've been using in execs, so I'll take a look at those.
Okay, mine is the one on Board Docs, under Board Calendar 10-9-21 Draft.
That's old.
Okay, so maybe that shouldn't be on Board Docs.
It should be on our, the website should have the most current one, but we will look into this.
And they just have, like, study session regular, doesn't give additional information about what's in that.
Chairman Marvin, I have one more thing to add to it. Looking at what's attached to our Board Docs for this meeting, the annual calendar of the meetings, I guess it's the meeting schedule, I think we'd have to vote at that April 19th meeting to be effective, if we're going to do anything different before the May 1st, because then the next meeting isn't until May 3rd.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
I was thinking you would, we would have had the study session before that and you'd vote.
That would be the latest we could vote.
The latest, but you would vote, you would be able to vote then, but we can look at moving it earlier.
And I would ask to have the MOU update sometime prior to the study session.
Absolutely.
Same, okay.
Okay, anything else for agenda items or the annual calendar? Okay, then, we have another Truth and Taxation meeting tomorrow at 6 o'clock, because who doesn't love Truth and Taxation meetings? And again, all those who are listening at home, if you want to come and say something at that meeting, make sure that you contact the Edison Building and get registered for that. On December 7th, we will have a regular Board meeting, and December 14th, we will have a special meeting with a closed session to consider the interim superintendent evaluation. And if there is nothing else, it is 9:57 and we are adjourned.